I'd like to call to order for the Islam Meadow School meeting. The meeting is, it is March 2,018 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. I ask if anyone else is doing so, please let me know. Okay, seeing none, moving on. If we can all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call vote starting to my left.
Allison Stevens, student rep.
Bill Fonseca.
Rich Fratello.
Gregory Thompson.
Audrey Mayhew.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent Smith.
Valerie Neer, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Analysis.
Pam Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Excellent. Now, moving down the list, we have 2.1, the approval of the February 26, 2018 executive meeting minutes.
Take a motion to approve the February 26, 2018 executive meeting minutes.
A motion made.
For second.
And second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward four to zero. Moving on, we have the approval of the February 26, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
Who to approve, sorry, Bill.
It's Craig Goode.
The February 26, 2018 regular session meeting minutes.
A motion's made.
Second.
And second, any further discussion on that?
God bless Kathy Slade.
Yes.
Sometimes she does it, my God.
I know. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward four to zero. Okay, we have committee and subcommittee communications. So, Ally, if you'd like to start us off, please.
So, we had Spartanum on Friday and Saturday night, which went really well. I went on Friday night and I thought that it was amazing. It's just like great how everybody pulls all that together and it was really, really funny. And also, at high school, we are still honoring Women's History Month this month and so that's going well.
Excellent. All right.
Yep. This past Friday, I attended the poverty summit put on by MASC at Clark University in Worcester, Mass. It was a very good program. The key points were that at some level, every district is dealing with some sort of poverty and how you just include all students and, you know, it was a very well-run, well-organized program. At the end of the day, I had an opportunity to spend a few minutes with our new education commissioner, Jeff Riley, and had a nice conversation with him. I am involved in planning, the early planning stages of a possible reception, inviting him out to Western Mass sometime this month and I'll keep everybody updated.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Fratello.
I had three items. I was honored to be the emcee for the Mountain View Dr. Seuss Contest in the cafeteria. Went very well. My colleagues to my right and I continued the unitary negotiations and we're progressing. And finally, I went to a basketball game, the tournament game, where the girls won. It was a blast.
Congratulations.
Everybody was so happy.
I hope you broke this streak.
Broke the curse. It was great. And yes, I have more to add on the, when we get to the vote on 7.3. I talked with a couple administrators about the shape of the high school.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Thompson.
Just as Mrs. Mayhew knows, we had an opportunity to visit a couple of the schools in the past two weeks. Burchland, the high school, Mountain View today, and High School today, and Maple Shade as well. I was in April ago, but Mrs. Mayhew. So, thank you for hosting us and letting us walk around and ask some questions and putting up with us for a brief period of time.
Yeah. No, I find it very helpful. Yeah, exactly. It's so helpful to go through the schools. So, again, thank you. And the only thing I want to add on is Spartanum. I was able to be there Friday night and it was just fantastic. Just the amount, it was packed. And just the amount of support that they get, that even if people who didn't have kids in the school were there, I even saw a couple of the lunch workers coming out to watch it too. So, it really is just fantastic, the way everyone supports the show. And I had a great time. I think it was really just a really fun show. So, thank you.
You guys were rock stars.
That's right. Exactly. Like, what is she doing now? She has another instrument. So, yeah, it was a little, to my heart, that one too. So, anyway. So, with that, we are good to move on. We don't have Beth with us tonight, so. At this point, this would be an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. So, if anyone is here to address the committee, this would be the time. Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on. We are moving down to presentations. We have 5.1.1, a technology planning expansion to 1.1. So, we have our team up here.
We do. Okay. So, we have Ryan Quimby joining us. We have Dr. Flanagan joining us, Dr. Allen, and Mrs. Antonell. I should have said Mr. Quimby, I apologize. So, this has been an ongoing partnership between ELPS and IT department. And we want to give you an idea of where we think we're going in the next two years. It's been a great journey so far over the last five years and we're adding to that as we move forward. Just by way of introduction, probably starting in 2013, when the district started to revise its most current technology plan, we started looking at how do we infuse more technology into our instructional settings? How do we provide the skills for our teachers to plan with technology and work with technology on a daily basis? And we started planning in terms of purchasing and professional development. A lot of that professional development over the last five years has been extremely successful. What we're hoping to do in the next two years, having done a good deal of purchasing within those five years to build up our inventory of equipment in each of the buildings, is now really expand to that next step and provide a one-to-one program where our students actually have a laptop with them on a daily basis. And we really need to take that next step, as we'll show you through these slides, to allow our students to master the skills that they need as they leave from us in grade 12. You'll see as we go through this that obviously there are certain pieces that are pushing us forward faster. That would be the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. But most important, we've stayed focused on the students and their needs. And that's why over the last five years, we've continued to look at how we plan and what we do and how we train teachers and what machines we use. With that said, we'll move into our presentation. We have a quick video here, just to give you an idea of different industries, but how technology in the business world is used.
College video.
Yep.
[inaudible]
We're today about access. Access to people, access to information, and access to data required to do our jobs effectively. Every day, I use all of my different devices to Skype, video conference, research our competition, analyze our data, and make decisions. All of the above to drive our decisions.
So, I'm Abby, Class 27, T, in Somano, and I now do some things in this week. And in my school, almost everyone has their own laptops or smartphones, other forms of technology like that. And almost all my homework is in a Blackboard or some other form online. We also have peer discussions online that are live, so that everyone contributes. And we get graded for that. And we also view our grades online, view our homework assignments. So, we don't have computer labs for the most part. Everyone has like an individual way of getting onto the Blackboard sites or whatever the remote is for them.
Brian McCullen from RMC Strategies Political Consulting. I use technology on a daily, hourly, and minute-by-minute basis. I need it to analyze all the information that is coming to us in this fast-paced political climate. And I need it to serve my clients properly. If I didn't have a laptop that I could be local with, I wouldn't be able to properly serve my clients and give them all the information they need. So, it is a vital, vital, vital tool for what I do day in and day out. Today is fast. If there's one word I have to use, it's definitely fast. I work at Lego, yes, a toy company. And I use technology in almost every aspect of what I do. I'm a creative producer there. And so, I use Adobe Creative Suite almost on a daily basis. Obviously, emails to communicate and even Skype, Link, all those good platforms, so that we can communicate overseas. So, it's an invaluable tool, especially with an international company like Lego.
Okay. So, very similar to the song that was in the background there, "Don't Stop Thinking About Tomorrow", that's what our planning really has been focused on. And although, as you look at the presentation here, you're seeing a number of different professions that use technology on a daily basis, for which we certainly want to have our students prepared, we're also preparing our students for jobs and careers that have not even been invented yet. And so, we have to make sure our students have skill sets, that they can be flexible and adapt to a very consistently changing workplace. And certainly at the collegiate level, as you heard one of our graduates say, they're asked to utilize technology in different platforms, pretty much on a daily and weekly basis.
I like this chief listening officer. I should put that on mic.
Yeah.
I do that a lot.
So, you all have been inside of our schools and you've noticed that the physical spaces have been changing and that's on purpose. You see that picture there on the left? Probably when all of us were in school, there was very little movement. The teacher was the center of the classroom. And that has changed dramatically. The picture on the right shows a sample of, similar to the high school collaborative learning lab, similar to the Makerspace sites that are popping up in our elementary and secondary level, teachers now are becoming more and more facilitators learning and much more student-centered. So, it's really important that our physical spaces have the tools in them to support that type of learning. So, you've heard a lot about the 21st century learning skills. In our world, we refer to them as the four Cs, collaboration, creativity, communication, and so forth. And so, what we're really trying to keep up with right now is highlighted in these four boxes. In the first box, we talk about the digital age literacy. Almost all classrooms now are relying more and more on the internet and other digital resources. Textbooks are still a resource, but we're seeing more of this kind of digital process for gaining information. And so, it's really important that our kids know how to navigate these texts, these tools, and do it responsibly and effectively. The second, the green one that you can see, is we talk a lot about STEM in these schools, DSA, Science, Technology. Now, we're adding the STEAM to it, so Arts and Math. And those types of environments require that our students be very, you know, able to produce work very quickly. Creative is a big part of it, being risk-takers. And technology allows them access to establish some of these skills. We also talk a lot about communication. You're going to see throughout the slides today that our students do a lot of collaborative work where they're asked to team up with one another, which is a very important skill for the workplace and in college. And then finally, high productivity. We're trying to utilize technology also to help students become more organized and their work be more efficient. Again, model the citizen that we want them to be when they leave us.
And clearly, college is changing a lot as well. This first stat really astounded me. Eight million college students use the Google Suite. And that was in 2010. That was eight years ago. So, you can imagine at this point, everybody is using the Google Suite. And then, also what's changing in college, just sort of how learning is delivered. Two quick stories, Ohio State's a good one. They're now going one-to-one, as large as Ohio State is. They're going one-to-one with iPads for their students, but they're trying to do it in an innovative way where instead of just handing them iPads and hoping professors use them, they're also having all these learning labs popping up all over campus. So, I could be like a creative writing major, but I could sign up to take sort of workshops on coding, you know, which is such an essential skill at this point. So, it's just a way that sort of having the device is allowing this new type of learning to pop up, which is outside of the traditional classroom, outside of your GPA, but might be some of the most interesting learning you do. And that's the kind of learning that happens when you have the device right at your fingertips. MIT is another cool example, obviously one of the leaders in where education is going. And MIT now has a lot of its classes are just problem-based, where the professor's job is literally to like, define a problem and put students in groups to work together to solve that problem. And then, the funniest part to me is, let's say I'm working with Gina and Elaine and we come to a point where we don't know what to do next. The professor won't answer our question. Literally will not answer our question. The professor will try to coach us into finding someone else that can answer the question. And that's because, in the world today, there's not, most of the questions are being answered for the first time. So, it's not about just going to the all-knowing person and getting your answer. And again, that's all device-driven, because you need to be able to network through your device. You need to be able to reach out to people in different realms, different countries, and find answers that your professor probably could give you, but they're trying to teach you the life skill by not. So, this is where education is headed at the next level as well. And we feel here in Islam Meadow, our students would benefit greatly from being at that point of learning, coming up through the ranks.
And I know you have it says college-ready, but I would also tend to say that even other careers that are skill-based, that don't require a four-year degree, are still going on computer-based, you know, platforms.
Yeah. A lot of the vocational programs that, career tech, have now integrated computer skills and certain coding aspects to them.
Yeah.
So, we know that education has been changing, so of course, how we assess learning and knowledge is also changing. And starting next year, every student in grades three through 10 will take the MCAS assessment online. We wanted to give you a quick little snippet of what this might look like for different grade levels. This is an example of a fifth-grade online MCAS question. The students are asked to read a passage. They need to be able to scroll through this. They are able to click over here and take notes if they need to about the passage. And then, the question itself asks them to put the order of events in which they occurred in the passage by dragging and dropping them into place. This is an example from a third-grade math MCAS question. Students have to be able to manipulate the tools for this particular question. It tells them to use a ruler from the toolbar. They read the question. They need to measure this to the nearest inch, so they would grab the inch ruler, line it up, and then use the equation editor to write their answer. And hit the blue next button when completed. So, that shows you just what the technology tools are that they have to use. That's really the easy part.
I find this horrible. I'm sorry.
So, our students are growing up...
No, we're not thinking anymore. We're just dragging. I mean, it seems, no, I'm sorry. I find this just, a student now can't just think. He's got to make sure he thinks and uses technology at the same time.
Well, they're growing up in an era that we need to prepare them to be able to think critically and interpret and analyze information digitally, because they're not going to get in the workplace and do that on paper.
And more than that, to eliminate that technology level where it's, they're so integrated, it's just, it's seamless.
Right. And honestly, the piece that we have to concentrate on is not showing that.
What about that third, fourth grader that has trouble maybe manipulating the keyboard or something?
You're always going to have some accommodations for students who have specific needs. But the majority of students are going to take it on the computer. They need to be able to interact and learn digitally with a digital screen and be able to synthesize information and show their knowledge in that way. The tools that you saw, it was just to give you a snippet, that's not the heavy lifting. The heavy lifting is how we interpret and analyze information and show our knowledge in a digital format rather than paper and pencil. And the best way for us to prepare our students to do that is through a one-to-one environment where they're engaged on a regular basis, every day, with, and not just the computer, but where they're collaborating with one another, where they're able to have conversations with people in the class, work on maybe one project together, speak with people who are in a different state, a different country, maybe just the classroom down the hall. These are tools that are going to help them be prepared for career and/or college, right? So, we need to have them prepared for technologies and jobs that haven't even been created yet. So, it's more around the thinking and how they are able to be adaptive through using all tools.
This is the path we have to follow. I understand, it just...
What grade level was that?
One was third and one was fifth.
So, to your point, Mr. Fratello.
How about fifth?
All I was going to say is, the reason that where we need to expand is because we don't want the first time that they utilize this type of technology to be the assessment.
Correct. So, knowing that work and school is changing, Mr. Fratello, the state has also updated our digital literacy and computer science standards to kind of reflect the knowledge that students are going to have. So, don't yell at me for this one.
I just wanted to go into the bottom of the question.
Oh, I know. I took that slide out on purpose. So, some examples of the standards that students are going to have to know and be able to do in this digital literacy and computer science standards are to describe ways to have safe practices in online, right? They're also going to have to be able to describe how a network is made and maybe name the various components, links, nodes, networking devices. They're going to have to collaboratively and individually create algorithms to solve problems. That could be coding a bot to go through a maze or a robot to go through a maze. And they're also going to have to collaboratively and/or individually create and test and modify programs using, in a graphical environment. An example there is block-based visual programming language. So, question for you is if you could guess the grade level of these skills that students, and our students are doing a lot of this already, what would be your thought on grade level for these particular standards?
While you're thinking, our standards now go K through 12.
Oh, my gosh, and now this is going to be...
K through 12.
You've got four. I heard fourth, I heard fifth. Anything different? You're actually pretty good. So, all of those standards are for the three to five grade standard. And then, there's a link there, you can find this on our website, where you can see the complete set of standards. And this is something I know that Superintendent Smith has mentioned that we have been looking at as a team together. We've had staff who are looking at it. You're going to hear a little bit more about how the middle school is tackling these. And this is how students are going to learn, it's some of the skills that they need. It's not that they're going to be taught just that. They're going to actually utilize this knowledge to access their other content and learn their other skills and knowledge, so.
And I would think, as a parent, you know, when I look at my fourth grader, she already had it, like she's already has computer skills. Like, she can do so much on her own already, that I can just imagine that it's just, you know, just taking it to another level for them.
And that's actually what our work is this year, is looking at where in our curriculum are students already getting the opportunity to begin to develop these skills? Hopefully, in some cases, and we found a few, not as many as we would like, there are opportunities for students to even master some of these skills. Unfortunately, there's a large number of standards that we need to now start to integrate and we've identified where we might be able to begin if students right now aren't getting the opportunity. But it's going to be, that's going to be the training and that's going to be implementation with our staff.
But the follow-up with what Deidre said, a lot of the kids are coming through with basic knowledge.
Yeah. Right. So, working with Ryan, we've been, as a leadership team, looking at readiness in three different ways. And we looked at staff readiness and what we need to do for them as far as professional and ourselves. Technology, do we have the technology available to be able to implement these standards? And then, curriculum readiness. So, and you're right, we didn't really think about the student readiness, because that's not something we have to plan for right now, because they are coming with more knowledge and initial skills with this.
Right. But it's all on different levels and this is where the challenge is going to be, is to get them to be able to do...
Yep.
All of it.
And one of the best ways to do that is through a one-to-one environment where they're utilizing different tools throughout their learning day.
So, we're asking now, look at, that was the third...
Those were third through fifth.
So, now we're having our elementary teachers, now they'll be experts in all these content areas. So, it's going to do well on MCAS 2.0. Now, we're going to fold in all these digital...
So, a lot of those are happening through...
Structural technology specialists comes in.
Yes. Remember that? We have a...
There are a few slides, there are a few slides down the road.
We have a solution. We have a solution for that.
As you have his paper, he knows the presentation.
Yeah. So, also, a lot of it is embedded in what they're doing now anyway. A lot of this crosses over with their math instruction, with their literacy instruction. It crosses over with science instruction. And the parts that don't, we have a recommendation for.
Okay. I need that.
We're getting there. Yeah.
See more slides.
Spoiler alert.
So, I'm just going to talk now about how teachers are ready, for the most part. On the slide on the left, the picture on the left are teachers at Maple Shade collaborating using Mastery Connect, which you've heard us talk about before. So, we're putting student data into Mastery Connect or we're taking tests online and the data is immediately in Mastery Connect and the teachers can plan how we need to work harder on certain standards or other things we've mastered. And they can just adjust everything pretty much on the spot.
They're creating the technology-enhanced assessments in Mastery Connect.
On the right is a picture of a fifth-grade class at Mountain View where the teacher is using Google Classroom with the students. So, the students read a book in their book group and then they create questions that all of them can answer together. So, they can see everyone's questions on the screen in Google Classroom and answer and discuss them all at the same time while they're looking at it. And another teacher actually popped in the room at that time to see how to do it. So, that's another way the teachers can learn, is from each other and who's doing really well at it already. And finally, if we have the one-to-ones and all this learning is going on through Google Classroom and the Google Suite, we're going to cut down on copying costs, paper, ink for printers, because we won't need the paper copies anymore.
Well, when your teachers just have a big video up there, they can just be on the computer the whole time.
Sounds like you're writing people. Trade off from the paper.
Do we, when we were some student teachers in Springfield, I'm amazed at how they carve out time with their ILSs. Are we getting closer to something like that where, I mean, like the grade two teachers all meet at the same time, once a week with ILS and math?
The problem at Maple Shade and Mountain View are that we share teachers.
Special.
So, usually when teachers have a lot of prep time, it falls when the kids are at specials. So, in our schools, it's not always possible unless we give them release time, which we do when we can, but then that's, you know, subs or paras covering. But we use a collaborative meeting after school. I use staff meeting time for things like that, so.
We're utilizing a lot of our structured time differently.
At the middle school, our coaches meet systematically with teachers all the time. All the time.
We have that team.
Yeah, we have a team and we have different collaboration time, so, yes.
I know it's hard at the high school, I'm sure.
Yes, we need some help.
Well, schedule it, maybe we can just, the class is scheduled this year.
We tried it.
This slide is also just about some of the secondary teachers and how we're ready. I'll go quick. But on the left, that's students taking an assessment on Mastery Connect on the computers. And the screen you see up front is the teacher's screen, where she can actually see what they're getting right and wrong as they go and sort of know what they're struggling with, obviously. And then, on the right, that's two seventh-grade science teachers. They combined and they did the same lab in two classrooms. In one classroom was hands-on with real materials and in the other classroom, it was a web-based lab doing the same thing. And the teachers went back and forth between the two. And on day one, you know, some kids were hands-on, some were computer. And then, on day two, they switched and the other kids were hands-on and on computer. So, certainly, our teachers are very ready for this and they all know I'm here tonight. They all just want to know when this is going to happen, kind of thing. These are some examples that we all tried to put together from our schools. The left column is the three to five schools. The middle is Burchland and the far right is the high school. Just some examples of, like, we all have carts, we all have computers, but at every school, it's sort of like a survival of the fittest, of who can get the material, the devices, right? So, without reading the bullets, like on the left, it's like 80 to 100% of the computers at the elementaries are used every day. Kids are all on the Google Suite. And even with all that usage, they feel there'd be more usage if they weren't like, throughout the school in different locations, right? And then, for me, in the middle, we have 12 carts and nine out of every 10 days, all 12 carts are used, if not more. And we often have teachers who have to change what they're doing because they were unable to get the cart that day. And then, on the right, you can see how the high school signs their stuff out during the different blocks. That's just a sample of, and that's a Monday morning, like, and so right off the bat, on the Monday morning, everything is being used. So, we have, you know, we've done a good job as schools and with IT to get devices and we've come a long way. I've been here five years and it's night and day from where we were. But there really are limits still and there really is a thirst for more devices and just sort of having it be automatic and not like a moment to have the technology, but just have it be automatic, the way it is in everybody's life, right? So, we definitely think that they're being used often, but if we had more, they'd be used even more often, of course.
So, this slide just shows some examples of how the kids are using it on a daily basis. So, this slide just shows some examples of how the kids are using it on a daily basis. So, on the top left is a third-grade classroom, and in the front group, you can see students working on Chromebooks. They could be doing keyboarding skills, vocabulary, spelling, math, while the teacher is able to meet with a small reading group at another table on other skills, and then they rotate. So, within an hour and a half, they've all had the computer time, the teacher time, and reading time. And then on the top right, these are fourth graders using the Macs to work on an anti-bullying project, but we also use the Macs to make iMovies so the students can read a novel in their classroom and then create a movie trailer about the book to advertise it to their classmates using the Macs. The kids at the elementary schools have been awesome at transporting. Dr. Allen was talking about how they're located now throughout the building, so it's not like they're right in their room, they have to transport them down the halls. We've had virtually no damage. You know, the kids have been trained how to hold them when they're walking in the hallways, how to charge them in the carts. They take care of them all themselves, which is great. And the bottom picture is a screenshot of Twitter because this year, we've really gotten into Twitter at Mountain View, and the kids are being trained on how to use social media appropriately. They train with Amy Pelzik, and they are interns for two weeks. And this was a great project that we had last week. One of my third-grade teachers is friends with the new AP Lit teacher at the high school, and he brought his class down to the third grade because they were both working on poetry at the same time, and they did this whole activity in the classroom with different groups. So, that was on our Twitter account last week.
So, this slide just shows you how, at the secondary level, our students are definitely ready. As you know, most teenagers are obsessed with social media, and that is the ELHS Twitter site. Like Elaine's mentioned, we also have an social intern program, and that's actually, a student had taken that during chemistry class and posted that on our site. So, we're always trying to teach students how to utilize social media in appropriate ways. On the bottom, you can see there, this is an example of what distance learning can do in the classroom. We're always trying to extend learning outside of the classroom. And you can imagine, you know, sometimes students are studying complex topics that have experts in the field that don't always live in the state of Massachusetts. So, imagine, very near in the future, you know, if there is a scientist in Chicago who's based in Chicago, our students could pull up Google Chat and have, as you can see from that picture, conversations and discussions with people around the world, and that's pretty exciting. And the other picture that you see there is from Burchland Park, and we're just trying to illustrate the fact that, you know, we're moving away from textbooks as the sole resources, worksheets as the sole resources. The internet is full of accessible information that is very valuable to students, so we're just trying to make those connections and extend learning outside of the classroom.
That's not permanent marker, by the way.
So, this is going to blow your mind, Mr. Ficero, so I want your head to pop off here. But we're about to show you a video, and one of the, it's been around for quite some times. It's a strategy called the flip classroom, and the idea behind it is that, you know, when you're in the classroom with students, that's a very valuable teaching time. And a lot of the traditional format is that the teacher gives a lecture, and then if there's time, we apply it and we, you know, get them ready for the homework. With the flip classroom, the homework is the teacher, watching the teacher lecture. So, the students at home, they click on their computer, they take notes while they're watching the lecture, so that when they come in the next morning, they spend a few minutes clarifying questions about the lecture, and then they're ready to go. The teacher starts to embed activities that give them the opportunity to actually apply what they learned the night before. So, there's more time spent on student-centered type of discussions rather than teacher-centered discussions. And this is an example of my math teacher, Leigh Florrie, who does this regularly. So, he's giving the lecture at home.
Okay, next, I'm going to make what's called a mapping diagram. So, input and domain and X, they're really kind of the same thing when it comes to functions, all right? So, all these domain numbers, negative 2, 0, 4, and 5, that's also the X values, the domain, and it's the inputs. So, if I'm listing these, you know, I can just list them right here in order. First, I got negative 2, and then I got 0, and then I got...
So, that just kind of gives you an idea of how that can be applied, and it's a lot easier if every student has their own device. The next picture is, we're seeing a large gain in the amount of technology applications that are being utilized by our teachers, and, you know, it's just a way to engage kids and make learning a lot more fun. So, the students there are in a history class, they were utilizing a scavenger hunt type of tool called goose chase, and was applied to their history class. And on the right, you see there, we're constantly utilizing Google as a form to get kids collaborating and kind of working with one another. So, as far as the high school and Burchland Park goes, these are things that we're utilizing daily, but man, would it be great if we could utilize it even more with one-to-one devices. So, one of the things, we've been doing a lot of research in how to make this whole thing come together in a very solid and effective way. And so, as you know, our community action learning class for past two years has been a one-to-one environment. The students are given a laptop, they take it home. Superintendent Smith had a meeting with the parents when we first kicked off this, and we've been doing it for two years. After my knowledge, we only had one issue with a device being broken, and unfortunately, it was a situation with one of our students with a car accident. She's okay, but she was in a car accident, and the device was in the car, and that's the only documented issue we've had. The kids have been, they take ownership, they enjoy it, so it's something like their telephone, they keep very sacred. So, there's a lot of ownership to that piece. The parent feedback has been very, very positive, and the best part about it is we've seen an increase in the level of collaboration and communication between students and with their community because they're able to, you know, have more conversations, whether it's email, Google Chat, and so forth with those around them. Our students right now in this class are utilizing the full suite of the Google educational tools, so this is just one way, not only are they getting college and career-ready, but we're also testing out, if we were to go full-blown on this, how would it look? Every year at the high school, we do a survey with our parents, and I just wanted to illustrate that, you know, one of the questions we ask is, "Do you have internet access at home?" And this was last year, we had 97.3 of our families say, "Yes, we do have internet access at home." One of the things we also ask our parents is to feedback on how we're doing with technology, and those two bullet points are just a couple of things that our parents have been saying to us pretty regularly, that they want more technology as they see it as an asset, sorry, and that they really want their students to be able to have those tools so that they can explore some of those occupations that we've talked about that rely heavily on science, technology, engineering, art, and math. So, Mr. Ficero, as you brought up earlier, how is a teacher supposed to do all this? The world of technology is changing on a daily level. I mean, there's something new coming out every single day. So, as a classroom teacher, when they're being asked to also keep up to date with their content, this is another layer of something to keep up with. And so, one of the ways that you bridge that gap is a position called instructional technology specialist. This is a DESI licensed staff member. This is a teacher.
You have that slide, we just added the parentheses, DESI licensed position.
Maybe looks a little different.
As soon as you print it, it's out of date.
That's right. Good job.
Keep going.
So, one of the reasons why an instructional technology specialist is so valuable when you're going to go one-to-one is it assists in evaluating and developing best practices for teachers. So, they serve as a resource to keep the teachers up to date in which instructional strategies are really going to be beneficial for each student in their content. The other piece of this is that we're hoping that an instructional technology specialist can also provide us some embedded professional development with our teachers. So, also, there's another piece of it is, we've got to get our teachers trained on technology as well. So, that person would kind of serve as a resource for that piece as well. An instructional technology specialist maximizes the technology investment. You want it to be fresh in teachers' minds, you want it to be current, and the way that you do that is providing this extra layer of support. One thing we wanted to point out is that districts that went to one-to-one had an instructional technology a year before to kind of get staff ready for, you know, the transition to one-to-one. So, we're seeing more and more of this position, really, throughout the country.
In some cases, more than a year before.
That's right.
It's been a licensed position for probably longer than 10 years. And at least eight years ago, Bublo hired their first instructional technology specialist.
Yeah, I wanted to point out, a couple of years ago, was it last year? Last year, Valerie and I went to Long Meadow High School. They do have an instructional technology specialist there that is shared through multiple grade spans, and one of the things they shared is that to really maximize the technology, that they see the need to create it individual on grade levels. So, you know, having one spread out really maximizes the use of technology across the district.
Seems pretty cool, right, Mr. Ficero?
Hang in there.
Seems like the wave of the future. The reality is, it's really the wave of today. It's surrounding districts that are already doing this. Bublo Public Schools, grades 5 to 12, one-to-one take-home. West Springfield Public Schools, 6 to 12 are one-to-one, with grades 9 to 12 are take-home. Springfield Public Schools have one-to-one, grades 3 to 12, and this year have 12 schools that have take-home, with next year having all students, grades 3 to 12, one-to-one with take-home.
Are they using Chromebooks mostly?
Yeah. A couple of the districts are Grafton, Summers, Suffield, and also Hamdell Overhand Schools are looking for next year to be one-to-one, grades 4, 6, and 9. So, it's the wave of today, really. It's not really the wave of the future. We're at the comfortable point where we're not going to be bleeding edge, we're not going to be getting ahead of ourselves and putting money out where we're not going to see a good return on it. So, a couple of focus points we have for you guys after the presentation is we really want to focus on the transparent integration of the technology in the classroom. Like Mr. Ficero's point, you know, we don't want there to be a technology snag when you're doing the MCAS. It's going to be, you're going to do the same education stuff that, you know, I think it was my senior year when they started it, and you didn't have to worry about it because you already know how to use paper and pen. This is going to be technology, you're already going to know how to use it, and it's going to be transparent. Another focus is going to be the skills that students are going to develop. You can collaborate a bunch better, especially with the Google Suite. You can analyze research, think critically, question, problem-solve a lot more when you have a device where you can communicate with your peers through inside of school and outside of school. So, a couple of recommendations we had from working on this plan is, we want to make sure that's sustainable, first of all. We didn't want to include it in a building project, and we didn't want to include any type of technology fee. We figured, I don't want to sell it, you guys don't want to sell it, so we won't even worry about that. Part of that...
Technology fees are very real in Eastern Mass.
Very real.
Schools are charging.
What kind of fee?
Could be anywhere from 150 to 300.
Yeah, buy the device, basically.
Pretty much.
If you're using Chromebooks.
Right.
But that fee was around when schools were experimenting with one-to-one with iPads and Macs.
So, supplemental.
Exactly.
So, part of the way we came up with the sustainable financial plan is picking devices that are reliable and affordable. Your Chromebooks really hit the mark, and we switched you guys over to Chromebooks, the town council uses them, and about 1,300 of our students have them in school. We'll be up 1,300 for them to use. Another part to make sure we have a successful plan was we embedded professional development in the budget planning for the one-to-one project. So, there's money set aside for that, and also with the instructional technology specialists. Part of their role will be tailoring professional development for technology for the staff, and also being there for the day-to-day stuff as well. It's really, in my mind, not all of our minds, it's a key point to this whole plan to making sure that it's success. Like Gina said, we want to make sure that we give them the devices, and they're not just using them for note-taking, that they're actually being integrated and elevated to the next level. And that's where the technology specialists can really help. They'll take a great teacher, make them even better, and they'll help the ones that are afraid of technology, they can fix your phone for you when you call.
What's the life expectancy on a Chromebook?
So, Chromebook, the day that they're issued, they're released, they still have a six-and-a-half-year timer, and that's from Google. They set that, and basically, they will guarantee support for six-and-a-half years from the date of release, not the date of manufacture. We're targeting six, or five years for a replacement cycle. Some of the ones that we have now, which we can get into in a little bit, are actually end-of-life, and then next, or FY '20, we have kind of a big shelf. So, some of the conclusions, as we just mentioned, were Chromebooks, obviously, are our most cost-effective solution. When we had first started talking about one-to-one, we were looking at Apple products, we're looking at pretty much a 3:1 ratio in devices. So, where before, we were looking at it, and we got scared by the big numbers and never came forward with a presentation like this. You know, now we're pretty comfortable, we're excited about it. You know, Gordon's doing car wheels across the office, he's so excited.
I stick the landing every time.
It's a sight to see.
But you can if somebody uses technology.
Well, you've been in technology.
If only we had more Chromebooks. So, our target is one-to-one take-home, grades 3 to 12, with the lower grades probably won't be take-home at first. It's something we are planning and probably growing into. And our start date, we're looking at is for fiscal year 2020, which would be July 1, 2019. We wanted to make sure that we gave us enough time to vet the whole plan, you know, bring you guys up to speed, the town council, town manager, bring them up to speed, address their concerns, and really make sure everybody's on board, and we're upfront about everything. You know, it's really where everything is going, and we spent a lot of time on this project, and love to hear your guys' feedback, see what else you guys think.
Just so, obviously, we're focusing in on one-to-one. It doesn't mean, and I know we said this earlier, but I want to reiterate it, that we're moving away from other platforms. It just means that the Chromebooks offer us the best way to create a one-to-one environment for our students. We'll still have the opportunity for students to use Mac carts and to use other platforms, but the one-to-one would become sort of the focal point for everyday teaching.
How many are we short right now?
We'll get into that.
Are you comfortable with the life expectancy of these things?
Six-and-a-half years. So, we're at five, we're targeting five, which was our targeted life for Macs and PCs as well.
So, at that point, you have to start reissuing?
Yep.
So, there's no, once these things hit that benchmark of whatever, the five years, they're no longer efficient, or what?
So, it's kind of a gray area through message boards and other IT directors talking about it. It's not, once that six-and-a-half-year timer hits, it doesn't just disintegrate into dust. You can still use it, they just don't guarantee support. So, Google makes weekly changes to their platform, and when they come out with a new technology or a new widget, they won't guarantee support on that if you're past that timeframe.
And five years is reasonable, really, technology in three years, four years, getting there, but we want to maximize what we're getting out of our investments. Five times, right?
Yeah. It's a safe target for replacement.
All right. So, are we targeting three full-time employees potentially?
We would like to gradually build to that. You know, later on in this agenda, we'll be talking about our budget requests, and so we have an instructional technology specialist that would not even be part of the plan in 2019, 2020. We would have that person next year if our budget goes through with the request that right now we've outlined.
And potentially use that, just required that one person?
Person would be housed at the high school, but certainly, as Mr. Prumey was talking about, professional development and the two professional development days that are district-wide, we want that person to support and offer professional development that moves everybody forward.
And then we really want to focus on the two additional FTEs for the following year?
The next, yeah.
No, you said that. It's in the plan.
Well, let me move the budget this year when we get to that point.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
No, there's not.
Well, I'm not sold on all the positions in the budget.
Yeah, what we talked about, so emotional.
I'd be more apt to replace one position there now with one of these positions.
I'm just saying, we'll pick it up.
Yeah.
We do have somewhat of a brief presentation on budget, because that's still changing, and we're looking at how we do that and do that well. It's a partnership between two departments, so we can take you into that. That's not a group of slides that we put into the packet because it was ever-changing.
Another 66 slides.
We didn't get that, we didn't get any of these, we didn't get these slides. That's what I was just saying. So, these are, we can take you through this just quickly because this is ever-changing. It's not as firm as the presentation that we just gave you. We wanted to make sure you understood where we've been, starting back in 2013 and where we're going. These slides here will start to give you an idea of how we think we can put the budget together around this, but they're not set in stone, so to speak. together around this, but they're not set in stone, so to speak.
Yeah, I was about that, this is the first time we look at, we look-
That's why, that's why this whole plan is FY '20. This is your first peak, and it's going to be one of quite a few conversations, I'm sure.
Just to get you thinking about it.
So, logistically now, that all the Chromebooks are charged on the cart, correct? So, how do we charge 25 per class Chromebooks? I mean, it's a logistical problem, I would think.
It's the student's responsibility to bring them charged. It's just as if they were, forgot their books.
Okay.
I worked in a one-to-one district where all of our students had laptops, and that was the case. They were very good about making sure it was charged the night before, but just in case, teachers always had a power strip so kids could, like, juice up if they needed to. So, there's always going to be, you know, some student that forgets or whatever, but there's ways to-
Speaking now, though, in terms of our use-
No, I'm speaking of everybody has it, the one that they bring home, they come to school.
So, one of the beauty about Chromebooks, it makes management such an ease, and it's really why, you know, everyone's going that way, is it's not, there's nothing device specific on it. So, Gina comes to school, it's dead, she can swap it out, get one login, and she gets exactly what she had.
Dr. Ryan, can you add an idea on this? Do you see your students in the ninth grade getting a Chromebook and keeping that Chromebook through grade 12, or every year they turn in, they get a new Chromebook?
Tournament.
Maybe turn them in.
If you have, you as the IT director, do you have supervisory, what am I looking for?
Watchdog?
Yeah, I mean, you have safety device, I mean, they can't go on there on sites that are inappropriate.
So, this year, we could, to get into that, I'll do give you a brief idea of what we do for content filtering. Right now, our content filtering is done on our firewall. So, we have our five schools and seven town buildings go through one internet connection, and it's at the internet connection. It's basically somebody at the door that's checking everything. The problem is now, everything is encrypted. So, any website you go to is encrypted, which means when you're in the middle, you can't see that traffic. You can see, okay, someone's trying to go to Google, but you can't, you have no visibility inside of that. So, what's in my FY 19 budget is an upgrade to our content filtering. It's a little software that goes on each Chromebook, and will monitor the internet traffic from the device itself and not from the door.
Another thing that we utilize, Mr. Ficero, at any given time, any of our administrators or teachers could log into any computer in the building. So, we were often doing random checks of computers. It would actually model what the kids, the kid's screen would come up on my computer. I could see like 20 at a time, and if a kid was doing something they weren't supposed to, I could turn off their computer from my computer. And sometimes I would send them little messages, hey, that's not appropriate, please switch, and they would do it. So, there's safeguards in terms of, from the administrative level and the teacher level of how you can monitor what's going on.
So, just a solution that we're looking at, since it's on that device, now when that student takes that device home, we still have control of the content filtering. There's actually a parent portal, so the parents can control the content filtering when the student is at home and see what their traffic is. So, you know, for disciplinary reasons, a parent can lock it out, and they can't get on the internet when they're at home on that device except for food sites. And it also has monitoring on the backend for self-harm and that type of stuff, safety issues. It'll can generate reports to principals.
We're going to have to teach parents.
Yeah, yeah. There's going to be a lot of information, education, and communication that we need to do over the next year and then ongoing.
Add them into the schools.
And that's really the plan, that's why we're getting-
Starting here.
Plenty of time in between us and the start date.
Right.
So, I'll give you a quick thing before Tim has to buy me dinner. Talk hardware. So, right now, our current inventory is, we have 1,208 Chromebooks, 249 Macs, 73 PCs, and 395 iPads, which are primarily pre-cated too. For the purposes of this, you know, we're still going to maintain those other devices, the Macs, PCs, and iPads, but for the purpose of this, we're just going to talk Chromebooks. So, for our FY '20 budget, which is our start date, we're planning on 2,150 students from grades three to 12. That number is a higher estimate, so we will keep a couple spares on hand for the odds and ends if something breaks or we need to replace them. We currently have 1,520 iPads, assuming we get the 240 I have requested for FY '19. That leaves us with 630 deficit, and so as part of this, we still have to replace them as well. In FY '20, like I was saying earlier, we have kind of a shelf where 930 of our Chromebooks are falling off the shelf. What I did was to kind of lessen that cost, was split that between FY '20 and FY '21, and left us with 612 replacements. So, for FY '20, we would need 1,242 new slash replacement devices. They'll be all new devices, but 612 will be actual replacements that we would take out of service.
So, say again, go ahead, read that one, please. 434,000 is what?
That would be our hardware request for FY '20, to get us-
That's the 350.
That's our foot in the-
It's rolling in your replacements and your new devices in order to get one-to-one.
How much are these?
350 apiece.
I thought we were closer than that.
We are, it's 612 replacements, all those ones falling off the shelf.
You have to keep the replacement going.
Oh, half of it.
Half of it. Half of it, we have to spend anyway.
So, then going forward, what, how do we maintain? So, if we need 21, we're going to need 440 a year.
Good segue. We built this part of the presentation for you, Greg. We built the first part.
You didn't need the slide the whole time, sure, yes.
This forecast is what our budget would look like without one-to-one. So, if we don't have one-to-one, this is what we would need to keep our current level of Chromebooks funded.
Is that all we're funding now? 110, 120?
We had a big surge, and now we, like, we have that shelf coming.
Yeah.
It's because we didn't have a cyclical plan.
We've been purchasing more and more over the last five years.
Yeah.
So, now the replacements-
So, let's see what the next one is.
So, this is with versus without one-to-one. The red line is if we don't have one-to-one, the blue is when we do. So, Bel, like you were saying, what the difference is, it evens out around FY '23-
Yeah, I see that.
-to less than 40,000 a year difference for hardware replacements. Now, this is only for Chromebooks, so this does not take into account Macs, PCs, or iPads.
Are we going to look to replace those?
Those would still follow a separate replacement schedule.
Add that same number, or would you add to it also?
Probably add to them.
Add to it based on?
Yeah.
Because we did see at the high school today in our tour where they would utilize the Apple as opposed to, right, Mac as opposed to-
But I see a lot of times, too, they'll grab a Mac card because the Chromebook cards are out, and then they'll use the Google Suite on a Mac.
Right.
They'll use it in Ferrari to get groceries.
What's the life expectancy on the other devices, then?
We keep everything at about five years.
Okay. So, you're, go back to that, so you're at 450, you know, between, you know, 430, 450,000 annually?
The first startup, yeah. It's getting over that first-
Yeah, then it's come, then it's done, okay.
And so, this team has been working, which is where the plan for success comes, at identifying, similar to what we've done with social and emotional, where we're reallocating funds we already have. To the extent possible, we're looking to reduce that sharp spike right there in FY '20 to identify funds that we might be able to put, reallocate, they're already in our budget, toward this. So, the buildings are looking at their building-based budgets, and we're looking at the district budget.
So, as we've been mentioning, you know, we really want to make sure this plan is successful, and the biggest part of that is making sure we have the instructional technology specialists. We budgeted 63,000 a year for those positions, optimistic we'll get one in FY '19, and then we'll get our second in FY '20 with our third coming in FY '21. Kind of staggered those in, you know, obviously to help so that first purchase, the first year isn't as bad of a sticker shock. So, that brings us to the big picture. Our total plan, so in these numbers, too, the numbers count as bringing that existing one-to-one instructional technology person into this budget, so you get a full picture of the entire project. So, in these numbers, FY '20 has two, '21 has three instructional technology specialists in the numbers.
In the 580?
In the 580, it has two full times.
What's our cost avoidance, what's that?
The cost avoidance is, what Gordon was just mentioning, is the money that the schools can come up with-
And the district.
As well as the district, and also the 63,000 that will hopefully be in the FY '19 budget, is not going to be a new expense in FY '20.
Okay.
So, this right now is, you know, this whole budget, if we were to apply it to this year and next year, it's line items that are in two different budgets, you know, or three different budgets for that matter. You have some of-
You mean fiscal year 19 and 20?
This fiscal year we're currently in, in FY '18, the type of thing we're looking at here is distributed across three different budgets. It's in line items in the IT budget, it's in line items in the school department budget, and it's in the capital budget. Renewal, for the most part, over the last five, six years, has come in the capital budget. What we need to do going forward, if we're going to sustain one-to-one, is take renewal for the one-to-one machines out of capital, which you know is always a changing discussion year to year. And so, we don't want our families to get into one-to-one and then be held hostage to capital discussions year to year.
So, we won't make a capital request for any of this stuff?
Not for the one-to-one.
We haven't quite ironed it out, but the goal is to make this an operational expense.
How do we work that into the operating budget? What was the, what was the number, annual basis, 142-ish?
362 is the first year.
First year, but you average out, right?
Yeah, it evens out with employees in FY '23 to 278.
Now, remember, employees are going to be in our personnel line.
I know, you're talking, quarter of a million, yeah.
Right.
Adding to our operating budget, but it's making everybody understand why. That doesn't happen every year.
No.
It doesn't, that's why we're starting early, to get everybody excited about it, and to make, you know, for the school committee and for the town council, to really make it a budget priority for FY '20.
Elevate, to your point, the sticker shock.
Right.
Well, the first year, are you going to do a capital investment, though, the big one?
That's one of the things that we're talking about, is just to get over, get us over that and get us into the cycle.
How do we achieve that?
I think we should. Wow, are we going to have the same cliff, then?
We won't, because it'll average out a little more. You know, and once it balances out, you know, some devices might get replaced early, some might stretch a year or two, but we're going to do our best to even it out, so that every year it evens out to, you know, starting at 278,000.
If a kid brings one home and it breaks, are they responsible? They have to replace it?
That's one of the discussions we're having, is a self-funded insurance program, kind of modeling what we did with the staff. It'll be a lower dollar amount because the devices are a lower dollar amount, but that's one of the things we're looking at.
We pay for that out of the operating budget, or do they have the parents pay for it?
It would be optional for parents to purchase.
Oh, to buy the insurance.
If they're not buying the insurance, then they would be subject to replacing-
What would it cost a year for?
The models that we looked at, it's 20 or 30 bucks. It's not a lot of money, because the devices are low-cost.
Right.
And, right, like Gina and Elaine were saying, when the kid is actually assigned that device, it's their device, they take much better care of it. We haven't had any problems in three years if we've been doing the one-to-one at the high school. It's their device, and also, it's not like they could pop it, key off, and stick it back in the cart because we know it's theirs.
And I wouldn't recommend that we pay for that on our end, only because if we're paying for every insurance policy at $3 a pop, you're going to pay for half of the machine in the-
Yeah, that's what we're doing, self-funded insurance.
If only we were the way we're going to do it, these parent fund, otherwise, we insured ourselves.
Right.
Costs us lots around, replace every other machine.
An insurance plan is easier to discuss with parents than technology.
Yeah. Yeah. So, going back to shelf life, you know when this particular one is going to max out?
Picture Ryan comes up on your machine.
The terminal is black. Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. Well, I mean, and part of it, we're going to have to get on board with the council on this because there's some major money here.
So, our thought process, since this is something that we're discussing through our budget development, especially the instructional technology specialist, we wanted to give you an idea of where we've been, which you've been part of, because you've heard the presentations around professional development and device purchasing, and where we're going. Some of the discussions that take place around budget this year could help this, and so we need to look at that. And then, we're thinking, we'll continue to have discussions with the town manager and the town finance director to look at this and see how we continue to make this presentation, and how we can mitigate, it's no longer up on the screen, but it's on my computer, you know, that first-year cost. And we will probably look to present to the council after they get through the FY '19 budget.
So, we're going to commit to those cost avoidances all the way through? There's some sizable money there.
Home is one position.
FY '20 would be where you see a very large amount to help reduce that spike, and then-
But are we asking every school to give up $20,000 in their school-based budget?
So far, every school has provided-
10 with a 35.
Close to 10.
Elementary.
Elementary's size. Yeah, based on the size. The district was put up, but-
And what they did is, they took a look at, over the last few years, they have been utilizing building funds for technology purposes. So, instead of kind of doing that, we're just pre-planning that now. So, they're able to say, this is how much we typically spend, looking at our past expenses, so that now can become a line item. And we're doing some creative things on the district side to support this during FY '20 without having a huge impact.
And it makes sense to go in the school budget versus the IT budget? We're in the IT budget now for replacement, right?
Yeah, it's kind of blended, but right now, it's falls under IT capital.
So, the renewal falls, just as Ryan's been saying, falls in IT capital. The purchasing of all these machines that are now getting to that end of life has been over in the operational budget of the schools over the last five years.
And one of the reasons we're also, you know, pitching it this way and starting this conversation this early is, our objective is to kind of separate this out of the regular operational budget, so next year is a, you know, if FY '20 is a 2% year, this will be exclusive of your 2%.
Well, that's why I wonder if it would be more advantageous from the council's standpoint to have it in the IT budget, so that the IT budget doesn't, isn't susceptible to the percentage that the rest of the departments are. And that's all town manager, council decision, it's not our decision to make, but if that's truly what's going to happen, which I find hard to believe sometimes because you never know with the council, what's going to be, who the manager is even going to be, maybe that's a better way to do it, is to leave in IT.
Well, I think all these points are going to be in the discussion.
Yeah.
I guess now we're getting to the point where we want to go public and start to vet this out, see what is the best financial strategy to make this happen. The key for us, which you're already doing, is that we have support of the school committee, eventually of the town council, certainly of the town manager and town finance director, and then of our parents, that they understand what we're doing, why we're doing, and that they're supportive as well.
And it has to be a collaborative effort and kind of a very strategic plan, which is what has been worked on to date, and we have a lot of work to do to get there. Because if we continue to try to, like, bolster our product, right, we bolster the IT department, the school department budget to buy more machines or technology devices, but we're not thinking replacement, then we're actually hurting the IT budget in price versa. So, this, you know, we'll work out the kinks of how much from each budget, but now we know this is how many that we need to get, and this is what needs to be in replacement, as opposed to let's just, you know, we've been working on trying to ratchet up our usage, like Dr. Allen had mentioned, over the last five years, we have so much more access, but we weren't really thinking strategically as a full team, which we are now, around how to keep this going, yeah.
How many non-school-side devices are there?
Non-school devices?
Roughly.
I mean, he's one of the champ.
160? That's it? Yeah. Yeah, that's what I made. So you want us in your budget, otherwise you're devastated, right?
The majority of my budget's actually maintenance contracts, so...
Is it really?
Yeah.
Sixty-five thousand a year. So, to that point, does our maintenance contracts will increase as well?
So, it'll actually decrease, so with a Chromebook, when you first buy the device, there's a $27 license fee you buy, which is included in the 350. And then, we will probably reduce our Mac count a little bit. By taking one Mac card out, you get three Chromebook cards. And the Macs, we actually pay $27 per year for management. So...
And the Chromebooks is a one-time fee?
It's a one-time fee, and it's good for six and a half years. So that just keeps working after that, but they don't guarantee it.
Right.
So, this is really our, you know, our get-excited meeting.
Yeah.
There's no budget requests yet, it's kind of just a glimpse into what we're planning, and...
I think it's a great idea, and figure out...
Collectively discuss it with Denise, with Sarah, and Howard, and fund these, I don't even, are they, or can we bond?
Electronics?
Electronic, five years? What's the life expectancy? Oh, yeah, five years.
You can. I think they'd probably advise not to.
Well, I only say that, our last two years of capital requests were totaled $100,000, and we're looking at 362, so I know some of that's operational with employees, but we don't typically get more than 100.
Do you remember the year they said that a lot of bonding was coming off, was that 2020?
2020.
Was it 21?
21. 21 percent?
Yeah, it's 21.
So, it might be, yeah, it's worth having a conversation about.
Yeah.
But if you do a larger bonding amount, to add that in, may not be that hard.
Right, but I think you put all the options on the table. Well, I'm just saying, we never get, we rarely get $298,000 in capital projects every year, and that's with everything else. So, unless there's an understanding that, well, we're saying put it in operational.
Right.
That's why, that's why I want to shift it down.
And we're saying that this is something that, if you're in poor, it's...
We're in, the period.
It's already in the budget, yeah.
And it's held separately.
It's like, we just have to get it in there now, because 362,000 is a big, big add. What's our request this year? Not even that much, is it?
Uh, no, it is.
Don't talk.
A little more.
But this is, this is extraordinary year.
Yes.
In terms of what we get, but we haven't got, we're counting.
We're looking to continue extraordinary years.
But if it becomes, you know, it's like, and I just said this to Ryan, it's like staff, once it's part of the operational, it goes forward, it's getting it in, that's the key.
We got to really talk about this, because there's levy capacity on all this, and they're going to leave a million dollars on the table this year in levy. We have to have a real discussion on that, too, because that can fund some of this.
And again, it's not, there's nothing, no requests for this plan for this year, it's all FY20.
No, it's good to bring that in. I mean, I'm ready to go, but, yeah.
What this does, though, it's going to stop all the other requests, no longer can buildings come to us with their nice little wish list.
No, that's what we're...
No, we're trying to place this on its own.
Right.
Very similar to what they did with, say, the ambulance project.
I understand, but...
We have to get in...
So that's not impacting the fire department's budget?
It's still going to overwhelm our budget, still.
I agree.
They look at the number, right, they look at the bottom line regardless.
I'm not convinced that this much money should go into this, I'm not convinced.
But this is the wave, if you think this is going right...
You're fine, but I'm just saying, we have other demands, too. You're making this the top priority by this number of money.
One of the things we talked about is that, as parents coming in, you know, new districts trying to figure out where they live, you know, we want to be, create something marketable for families that have the advantage of, you know, like, I don't, I want to be ahead of what's going on in Western Massachusetts, I don't want to be behind, and I think all of us kind of agree on that. It's not when, it's not, it's when it happens, really, it's not.
And if we don't, it's not a matter of being ahead, it'll be, we will lag behind. Our students will lag behind.
I'm not saying not to do it, I'm saying, I have to be convinced a little more that to spend that much money in lieu of other programs that would be beneficial to our students, because that's going to take up the whole, that's going to take up a large amount of our requests.
And that's the challenge, you see, how do we have this not compete with other needs?
We spend, the average high school textbooks right now is $120. That's the average high school textbook right now.
I'm sorry, I missed that, can I just...
The average textbook that we spend for high schools, $120.
Yeah.
You know, this could, I mean, every year, we have to replace new books, this is...
I was going to say, what's the life expectancy on that textbook?
Well, we've had textbooks for, you know...
I know, but what's the life, yeah, what's the life, what's the...
Right.
I know how long we've had them. Are we taking from curriculum renewal, part of that cost avoidance?
Possible.
For FY20, no, for FY20, that is one idea, to freeze for one year.
To get to that number.
Yeah.
Not for FY20.
Oh, to push everyone off a year?
This would positively impact every department, in the long run. So, to hold for one year would not be...
But will we need less textbooks in the end? Are we going to save over $50?
That's, the hope is, you're looking at, you can identify savings in textbooks, you can identify savings in paper usage, and...
Copy or maintenance.
I even argue in professional development, because if we have an instructional technology specialist in-house, that's a person who can give PD.
Right.
You're never going to get rid of a curriculum renewal budget completely, you just change what it looks like, right?
Right.
So, now we have books that are outdated, and we're using them and trying to replace them at 160 or 200 a pop, depending on the content area, to now you do a five-year subscription. The device, it's on the device, it's electronic, the notebook or the...
What does that cost?
And it stays updated.
What's that cost for a student?
Oh, they're pretty savvy, they're, it's coming up, it's not as much necessarily, but it's pretty close. However, the difference is that it's five years, and it's always updated. It is never out of date, because that, you don't pay extra for them to update or revise the information. To Mr. Fuchero's point earlier, a lot of the interventions or accommodations that you need for students to access information is built right in, they have some of the differentiation right there in place. We will always need some print for the, well, maybe not always, but for the short term, you will always need a few, but you will not need one for every student. You would have a smaller subset of print books for students who may require that.
So, what is the next step?
So, the next step is that we continue to work not only as a team here, but we start working with the town finance director, town manager, and we start...
That discussion will just be financial, am I correct?
Correct.
Because educational portion is coming from this room here.
Correct.
There's not a discussion whether it's the right thing or the wrong thing.
Well, it's a discussion to generate support and enthusiasm across departments, beyond just IT and the school department. We've actually already branched out to the public library, and so the library is on board, is one of the things, even though the graph earlier had shown that our families, for the most part, have internet capacity, those who do not, we're going to work with the library to make sure that we're providing everybody access somewhere for the majority of the...
She's really excited about it, and they actually have a Chromebook card in the library already.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, she's very, very forward-thinking.
So, at some point, there'll be another presentation, fine-tuning what we're learning now.
Correct.
Yep, this is the get-excited meeting.
Not getting anxious, so...
Not getting anxious. That's a year out, at least, yeah.
Okay, you're requesting some this year for schools?
Uh, yes, I have a request, FY19 capital request.
How many devices are you...
240.
And that's before these numbers that you showed us?
Yeah.
That's assuming we get those.
Also, there's staff renewal. We have some staff computers.
Yep, staff renewals as well.
That's on the...
So, like, separate out staff, and then students, we break it out into the different technologies.
So, 2100, is students only 2150?
Yes.
Not staff?
No, correctly.
Is staff, well, that's not in our OGE, the staff part.
The renewal, the renewal is...
It's yours, but it's not going to be forever? Or we don't know yet?
Oh, I think the plan just leaves that as it is.
That's not part of the 162, though, that you said?
That's not part of the 162. The 162 is for Chromebooks only.
Teacher units do we have?
200-ish, 210?
Maybe a little higher.
So, that's another 10% of the 2100 that we're asking to have on a five-year...
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to be clear, like, this is only for student Chromebooks.
Right.
So, the staff is, will be separate, and then the other student devices will be separate as well. It will be drastically less, because we won't have the 2,000 Chromebooks that we have to maintain through the capital process.
Right. But those have been purchased through capital investments, so far, through the IT request?
Yep.
Renewal.
Renewal. Well, and originals?
Now, original, we made the purchases through operational, which is why the renewal is becoming so much larger.
Oh. Fancy how we slid that over there.
Well, it's been a blend, it's been...
No, I know, I can make sense.
In fairness to IT, we can't continue to do that. If we're going to continue to need inventory to get the one-to-one, they can't continue just to try to do the renewal, which is growing each year for them.
So, we'll just kind of have to figure out how to work that in?
Right. I know it looks like a big scary number now, but the reality is, on the hardware side, we're, once we even out, $40,000 away. Not very far.
Wait, taken, what?
Once the initial purchase evens out?
Yeah. From what we're doing now to one-to-one, the difference is four annually.
Hardware-wise, yeah.
Hardware-wise.
Right.
We have to get the leveling off.
That's inclusive license.
That's inclusive.
Yeah.
Yeah, just got to get the level off.
That's it.
That's it. You just got to get to that high blue number first.
There's done a road.
Looking for all kinds of mitigation that we can create.
Can we have this presentation?
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely.
Looks good, I'm in.
I know, I know.
It's good stuff.
Thank you, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, very impressive. That'll be interesting, though.
I know.
It is, it's good stuff. To your point, Rich, we need a hurdle to build into the operating...
Yeah, it will.
It will be.
That's, that's one of the challenges, yeah.
Which is why this is the get-excited thing, because we want to do the get-excited parts throughout the different groups, and then hopefully to figure out how do you present that budget and have support for it, for the same groups that are excited.
Ryan, how much have you shared of this with Sarah and Denise?
We had our, with this entire presentation, like we just did with Denise this morning.
Oh, you, all this?
Yeah.
Sarah hasn't.
You've been in this room all day.
Since this morning? Since this morning? There's a little breakout to Bill's...
Tim especially, because he's going to continue in this room, the next agenda.
We were in it before that meeting.
That's right.
Right.
Anybody breakfast?
They had fresh coffee.
Oh, that's it?
There you go.
That's it.
Okay.
And milk.
Any other questions for, before Ryan leaves?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so we'll move on.
Our coffee budget's going to IT, so...
We'll move on to 5.1.2, which is digital literacy and computer science, the DLCS courses. So, Dr. Allen?
Dr. Allen is going to present to us some of the work that has branched off from the work we're doing as a leadership team, as we look at those digital literacy and computer science standards. What does that mean for curriculum, in this case, specifically curriculum at the middle school?
So, I'm not, you all have this in front of you, right?
Yes.
And, so I'm not, I'm assuming you're pretty familiar with those standards, or have heard of them at least. Obviously, they hit now about a year and a half ago. So, what you're looking at in this packet, like, I mean, I'm sure this is often the case, just seems like a packet, it's like the culmination of a year's worth of work at Burchland's. About halfway through the year last year, we started pulling teachers out of their regular department meetings, and we sort of created what we're calling the DLCS department, which included my computer teacher, sort of literacy reading teacher, TV studio teacher, and then my STEAM teacher. And we started meeting, and I introduced them to these standards, and we just started sort of a long journey and process, looking at the standards, figuring out how we could address them. So, Mr. Neer helped me a lot, and then this year in leadership, we spent a lot of time focused on these standards, which sort of finalized our thinking as a school, as to how we could best address them. So, through a long process, we came up with a way that we think, because obviously, these standards are really overwhelming, and they're great, like, I'm excited by them, and they're what we should be teaching, but they are like zero to 100 overnight. So, we came up with a way, I won't go through the whole process, but we came up with a way to address 85 to 90% of them in classes at Burchland Park. And I'll be honest, I said to the department, when I started meeting with them a year ago, I said, I want to be the model school. We want to be, when someone says, like, how do you deal with the DLCS, we want to be the middle school that has the best answer. And I'm confident with what you have in your hands, that I have not seen a middle school in Massachusetts that has a better answer. That said, it still only gets us to 85 to 90% of the standards, because there's some that we just don't have the capacity to teach. Now, that said, and I'll say this before we dive into here, we're working closely with Ryan Quimby in the IT department, where we're going to set up workshops, two-hour workshops that we can deliver on half-days, and Ryan is going to work with Connor, Mr. Martin and I, and sort of put together these two-hour workshops that hit the other standards. Like, when I open a computer, what do I see, right? I'm not sure we need a class on that, but it's a standard, they should be exposed to it. So, we're going to sort of do a train-the-trainer model, and the IT department's going to work with us to create workshops, we're going to use days like half-days, you know, where learning is taking place, but it's a half-day at the same time. So, we're really excited about that as well, even our advisories on Mondays, like, we can start to bring, in our opinion, we could bring 60 to 100 kids into the library, have a good engaging activity, have them working in groups, and that 15% of these standards, which we still can't really find a home for, we can address. What you're looking at is what I would argue that sort of 85% of the most important parts of the standards. So, what we set out to do, once we were figuring out how we would do this, was to sort of create a class catalog, like you would in a college. So, what you see on the front is in each grade what we're offering for classes, and then sort of the details is like the model, and I could explain those more if you have any questions on them, but there's all these different ways a kid gets a special at Burchland. So, you can see there's a lot of, in the details column, there's sort of three different ways for it to happen. Not every kid would get all of these classes. Some kids might get all of these classes, but not every kid would get all of them, but at least we have sort of a buffet of DLCS classes, so that we get kids as much as we can. The next step, by the way, with DLCS, is to bring it to core teachers and say, here's where you fit in. Like, there's a lot of math standards that if we were one, you know, if we had the technology in math classrooms, and the teachers had the comfort level with it, that they would be dealing with algorithms and Google spreadsheets and all that in math. So, that's the next step. But I'll be honest, I didn't want to go to my core teachers until we were confident with how the specials' teachers were dealing with this first. So, you can see the list of all the classes, and you can see...
When would this be implemented?
This would be implemented starting in September. This would be implemented starting in September.
September?
Yeah. So, now that said, a lot of this, we're trying right now.
I'm going to have to retest some of this.
The way we did it is we're trying. So, media and print literacy, we're trying a lot of the curriculum there. In the media and print literacy class, we got a fully free curriculum online from an organization called Common Sense Media, and it's just phenomenal. It's phenomenal, it's free. Our computer science class, we've had computer class for a long time, but this completely revamps it to teach, no longer to like just show you how to fill in a spreadsheet or show you how to type an email or show you how to, you know, sort of the stuff now that kids come with, because 3-5 does so much, or K-5 does so much. So, it completely revamps that and we do like a Google curriculum, which gets way deeper into the Google suite. You'll notice in 7th grade, my STEAM teacher would actually teach a coding class, which I think would be extremely exciting to have kids taking, we've always had some coding happening here and there, but to just have coding class, which in many ways, 10 years from now, I bet every school will have two coding teachers, you know, like, so to get ahead of that a little bit. So, to answer your question, Ms. Fertile, a lot of this is being tried now, but I'm here tonight to sort of say, here's the big picture that we would like to fully start in September. I'll give you one example in like computer science class. I was in there the other day and they were doing this awesome activity around fake news. So, they had learned all about fake news and then their job was to write a fake news article. So, they had to create a headline, they had to find bogus research sites that they could like cite, you know? And I'll be honest with you, like, I'm on Facebook, like, I was reading over their shoulders and like it looked like a lot of the articles that pop up in Facebook and you go like, "Really?" Like, some kid was writing one, like, "If you eat an alligator tail, you live longer", or something like that, like, and then they were citing stuff, so, but the point is it's backwards, right? Like, because they were writing it, they'll now be able to identify fake news much easier. So, really cool stuff. The computer science curriculum, that's in 7th and 8th, we found, myself, my literacy coach and my computer teacher went to MasQ Conference at Gillette this fall and like, to be honest, we got there and she was really nervous, because here she is with only a few years left and her curriculum's changing. And we left and she had all these different ideas for curriculum and she had networks around the state, so certainly we're not the only school doing this, but, but we've, it's gone well. It's gone well.
Will a student in a tiered instruction program be able to take some of these courses?
Say that again?
Will a student in a tiered instruction program?
Oh, yep.
Be able to take some of these courses?
Yep.
So, the details, this fits into your master schedule?
This fits into the master schedule. Yeah. So, in 7th and 8th, the classes that you see that say three times per week, a tiered kid could not take that class, because they have their tiered class in that three times-a-week spot, all right? But then if they get out.
Right.
They can't go to Spanish, which is another three times-a-week class. Like, you can't leave tiered and then just jump into Spanish midway. So, you're actually very apt, if you work out, to hop into a DLCS class. Whereas the 10 weeks every day class, that's independent of tiered. And then in 6th grade, it's a new model here, which I believe Birchland had a long time ago. But all of our 6th grade tier, all of our, sorry, all of our 6th grade specials run 10 weeks every day, all right? So, they don't have the three-time-a-week thing in 6th grade. What we're doing here is we want to give 6th graders a larger buffet of classes, like TV studio, it's like our most exciting class, like, kids just can't believe it even exists. And right now, they don't get it till 7th. And now they'll be able to take a five-week class in 6th grade. So, now those five-week classes you see there would be pass/fail. Like, it's just, they're just not about like, "Are you going to get an A?" They're about like, "We want to show you this cool stuff and get you started, get you interested in STEAM, get you going on media and print literacy, get you into the TV studio so when you watch the morning announcements every morning, you like see where they're coming from."
So, would each 6th grader get a chance to take each of those classes, since it's five-week?
Not, not everybody.
Okay.
Band is always a big commitment.
Yeah.
Band is always a big commitment. But a lot of them would, yep.
Dr. Allen, I say this sensitive because having been in your position, I hate it when a school committee asks me this question.
Are you going to answer it?
That's a good answer, yeah.
It's written on anyway.
As I read the descriptions, I noticed the detailed, I didn't see anywhere where the students know how they're going to be assessed. At the high school, we always make sure that it stated that the students will be assessed by quizzes, projects, et cetera, et cetera. As I read these over, I only saw two or three that were specific in that area. Am I just being over dramatic or is it the description itself enough?
Yeah, I mean, so I think, I personally think the description itself is enough. The assessment is sort of built in, it's almost all project-based learning, so they're going to be assessed through projects. But also the teachers wrote these, right? So, like, part of this was, was me trying to lead us to be a leader in these standards, but it was also me trying to like not tell, like, so they wrote their descriptions, I worked with them, I edited them, you know, gave them suggestions. But, but you know, you'll see in TV studio, like, I would argue in TV studio, we've gone farther than we have in the past as to how we'll be assessed, because they're going to be creating PSAs around some pretty heavy topics, you know, which will be, which will be a great skill to have. In computers, you know, all those projects that list that they're going to be doing, that's how they're being assessed, is the completion of those projects. In STEAM, how they're being assessed is not going to change, it's all in the projects. In media and print literacy is broken down into units, and at the end of every unit, there's a project. So, great question, but I have, I don't have that concern, there's plenty of projects built in here that will give them plenty of grades.
I know, it seems very intense.
It's all, you know, again, we come out of what we just, the first presentation, now we're learning about this, and it's all kind of tied it together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all, you know, it'll all wrap it to, you know.
This all fits into the Unit A contract and the master schedule and everything?
Fits into the master schedule. We're a year into the work and, you know, and my teachers, you know, they're doing it. They're, you know, it's, they're all veteran teachers, so it's not like I'm hiring new people to do this stuff. So, you know, that's why we dove in, that's why I'm a year since starting that I'm coming to you, because we had to do this together and step at a time, and all we had was once a month to meet. So, as far as Unit A, I mean, I, yeah, I haven't heard anything. I've heard fears and like, I can't believe I got to change what I'm doing with four or five years left, but, no, they're in, they're in. And they've had a year, you know, I was able to give the computer science teacher who's changing her schedule entirely, I gave her more prep periods this year in order to her to like just deflate as she's like building two new curriculums, right? So, like, we did a lot of strategic things to help it hopefully not have Unit A problems.
Thank you.
And space, is it an issue too? There's enough.
No, they all have great learning spaces, yeah. STEAM is a great classroom, the only problem with it is it's in the deep corner, I wish it was like in the middle of the school. Computer science.
Make your space in the middle of the school.
Yeah, we do have make your space, we have fixed that a bit. Yeah, no, they all have locations and, yeah.
This is the one we should vote on?
I think.
Because we have basically new, new courses. I make a motion to approve the digital literacy and computer science DLCS courses at Birchland Park Middle School for September of 2018.
Okay, motion's made.
I'll second.
And second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward 4 to 0, so thank you.
Well, the passion project.
Passion projects.
Moving on to.
You don't like standing still at Birchland.
You're not ready to leave the room yet.
So, I'll try to like summarize this packet, but basically, we've always had interest in having some sort of 8th grade project slash moment. You know, so one example is the senior projects at the high school, which I always come over in grade, right? Another example is, last week, I was at Renaissance School in Springfield where they have three times-a-year student-led conferences, where a kid I mentor was leading a parent conference, right? So, like, there's all sorts of different models that middle schools use to like sort of have kids lead something, own something, present something. So, we've been working with our 8th grade teachers to, you know, we've always had this in the back of our minds, like, "How do we do this?", because it's a big thing to add on, right? So, what happened this year was, as you know, we've started an advisory program where on Thursdays, we do a full-school lesson, where I do the lesson plan, and then the entire school implements the lesson plan during Thursday advisories. So, right now, we're in like a six-week stint where we're focused on social media safety. So, this year, I'm doing one lesson plan per week with Mr. Martin and, and, you know, and everybody's implementing it. And in some weeks, they're like, "Wow, great lesson plan." In other weeks, I walk out into the hallways after that moment and they're like staring me down, like, "Sorry, we'll do some better next week."
Now, fairness to Dr. Allen, he's implementing it with Mr. Martin, because he has an advisory. So, he gets to implement his own lesson plan.
Yeah, so one, so every week, one of us walks to school to like see it being implemented elsewhere and one of us implements it. And Mr. Martin works harder than me, so I let him choose. You want to do this lesson or do you want to watch this lesson? So, that matters because it was a big change for our 8th grade. So, like, they were like, "What? You're going to bother me during advisory now?" Like, we like to just hang and just kind of like talk and, you know, relax with our teachers during advisory. So, there was a ton of pushback in 8th grade at first from the students, which we knew was coming, but much like anything you do in parenting, like, you just got to plow through that initial, "I can't believe of this new expectation." But then we also realized that maybe here was our space, maybe here was where something else could go, and it would be like a relief to the kids, it'd be a relief to the staff who like, I mean, we're getting to mid-March now, like, our 8th graders are drowning us out a bit, you know? So, we kind of found this space. So, I actually proposed it to my teachers for this year. I said, "Hey, why don't we try something different? Why don't we in mid-March move you off of the all-school lesson and move you into, let's try this passion project?" And one of my teachers, Amy Singh, she's already doing passion projects with her kids, so she's trying it. And actually, the teacher said, "No." They said, "We've already won the battle." Like, now they expect Thursdays. So, this year, can we just stay the course? And I said, "Sure, absolutely. But next year, we won't be able to do the all-school lesson anymore, because 6th graders will be in 7th and any lesson we've done, they'll have, they'll have had." So, that's going to be a big part of this summer, is we got to go from one advisory curriculum to three. So, that's why I said, "What about next year, guys? Like, what about next year if 8th grade in March turns to something different?" And that's where the teachers were open to it for next year. So, that's what sort of the background on this. So, a passion project is not completely dissimilar to the, to the career projects at the high school, but it has to be somewhat dissimilar, because we already do career projects at the middle school. They do them through the guidance counselor and there's huge presentations in December in the library, and if you get my pictures, you saw a bunch of them. So, a passion project is just what it says it is. It's you pick something you're passionate about. So, you give kids the autonomy to choose their topic. So, can a kid pick skateboarding? Yep, they can, right? Anything, obviously, that's appropriate, they can choose. And then there's just a whole process. This first page gives a brief overview, then it gives some of the standards, which I won't go into, okay? The second page at the top talks about the support the students will get, including a graphic organizer. They have, we do a ton of research stuff at our school, we've come so far in that in the last two years. So, Noodle Tools is what our kids are all used to using, and that's their research database. There's a work checklist to sort of guide them, there's a rubric about the presentation, we'll show them exemplars of a project, and then we'll show them TED Talks done by adolescents, which we're already doing this year, you know? When will students work on this? Like I said, they'll start in March in their Thursday advisory. So, they'll go off of week-to-week lessons and they'll go into passion projects. A big question is the third one, was what is the accountability? So, I worked with the high school a little bit and they, they, I always thought that theirs was a graduation requirement, and maybe it is, but it's also sort of wrapped into their English grade, I guess. So, what we came up with, and I worked with Mindy Spencer, who works with Rediker, who works with the state to make sure this could happen, like on the back ends. I didn't want to put the grading of this onto my teachers at all. I feel like for this to go successful, I want them to just be in on the fun parts of it and not feel like, "Oh, how am I going to grade this? How am I going to add this?" So, we can add an independent study class to every 8th grader's report card for fourth marking period. So, the class obviously doesn't have meeting times, it's anything like that. And it's just a pass/fail class. And you'll see the rubric in a minute, but basically, if they score a 12 or higher out of 20, they get a pass. And there'll be two, there'll be two people, there'll be two evaluators in every, so this will be a little different than high school. There'll be two evaluators, the way I'm proposing it, in every, in every presentation, okay? And instead of filling out separate rubrics, we're going to fill out one rubric. So, you know, in the high school ones, we all fill it out and we hand it to Macarini and say, "Good luck figuring that out." This would be like, the evaluator's got to talk it out and come up with a score. But then, because of that, when we're done, make a copy of it, give it to the kid, keep a copy, give it to one of my secretaries, and they just input pass or fail, right? To be honest with you, if a kid got an 11, like, I would be like, "Hey, man, just add three things and you can do it next week in my office." Like, well, I'll get somebody else back in here. Like, this is not about failure, this is about passing. So, that's the accountability where, but we do feel there needs to be accountability.
Right.
Like, there needs to be something that like the kids realize. Fourth one, the logistics, it's similar, you know, two to three evaluators, basically two days in June, I'm sure I'd be inviting all of you, and I would just, I would, out what Mr. Macarini does, I'd be doing, like, here's where you're going, here's where you're going, here's where you're going, and here we go. Parents would be invited.
Like scoring training for the evaluators?
Yes, of course, yeah. Parents will be invited to the presentations, but I would definitely be clear that we can't schedule around parent schedules, so like, we just schedule. But we want them to come, like, what a cool moment for them to come to see their kid giving this. So, so, the next page is the initial planning form, which is just a guide for like getting up and running. And obviously, at the bottom, the advisory teacher would have to fill this out, would have to sign that like they're on their, their track. I showed this, by the way, to all my 8th grade teachers before showing it to you guys, and one of their questions was, "Well, what if they change their topic?" I said, "They can change their topic, like, our passions change, they just have to refill this out and then you got to re-sign it", kind of thing, you know? The fourth page is, needs to be made prettier, but it's just sort of the, this would be their guide, you know? I don't know if we'd give them like a folder with this on it, or somehow we'd make this clear. But these are the steps, they got to do each of these steps. And as they do them, the advisory teacher just initials that they've done. So, this is our way to, you know, we want to let them go, but there's got to be checkpoints along the way.
Well, you've got to have some sort of guideline.
Yeah.
So, they're not waiting till the last day.
Yep, exactly. So, you can see this goes in order, if you read down it, like before creating your presentation and then while you're creating your presentation, and then do you practice, did you practice it? And then choosing the appropriate clothing to wear. What do you think, Rich? Does that sound weird that I'm saying choose the appropriate clothing?
They may be out of order. No, you have it, it's maybe at the end. This one, the checklist, done?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's the ugliest.
Oh, sorry.
It's the ugly, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And then the rubric is the last one. The way I built the rubric was I got Mr. Macarini's rubric. So, like appearance, I just stole from him. Questions, I think I stole from him. Passion, presentation and content were sort of some of my own and some of his. But yeah, it looks very similar. And you can see, just get great on all of those, one sheet. So, it's definitely one of those things that year one will be the choppiest, right? So, like, I personally would have loved to have tried this this year, just to like take our brute bumps, right? But when my teacher said, "Please, just keep sending us your lesson, we'll keep doing it," I know better. I said, "Absolutely, I'm glad you're enjoying them."
Now, for me, just as a parent, I just want to be sure that it's not going to add like extra stress or anxiety to my kid who may have other homework or other activities after school and then just feels like it's one more thing he or she has to do.
I think the answer is it's going to, for some kids, but we're going to work, they're going to have time in school to do it, and we're going to be working to lower that anxiety, while at the same time, preparing them that like, yeah, you have your short-term homework, you have your, doing three months' homework, you know? And, you know, a lot of research on motivation says, when you get autonomy in topic, your motivation skyrockets. So, yes, I mean, I'm thinking of my oldest daughter, this would add some anxiety, but...
Because they want the 20, not the 12.
Yeah. But me personally would see it as good anxiety. I'd be like, "Yeah, it's March, this is due in June, you know, it's about something you love, you know, they've mapped out your steps, you get time in school, like..."
Yeah, I like the time in school part, that's good.
To what Tim said a minute ago, the first year might be choppy, but as, as we've seen with the senior projects, it's second nature now. So, I think, and then the anxiety level will decrease once it becomes part of the regular routine. Like, if you're in, you go into 6th grade and you see, and you know this is coming, it's just, I just see the evolution of the way the senior projects have evolved, the same thing happening in middle to middle school.
The senior project, it wasn't as bad?
Yeah, no, it wasn't as bad as I thought it was going to be at all.
Well, this will prepare them for the senior project.
Yeah, I think it will prepare them for us. They'd feel like the better when they're senior, they'd be like, "Well, I've already done things like this before, so it'll probably be like better."
That's a great.
And we did emulate one of, another part of the senior project, we're not requiring an interview. Like, I know in the senior project, they're supposed to get to the person. But they do have to find, and this goes to that networking, like they said at MIT, like, they do have to find an expert in that. Now, that expert could be.
Right, a family member.
A family member, right? But they're, they have to identify somebody that's an expert in this and reach out and just get some information from them. So, yeah, I mean, it, it could, I'm not going to lie, for, for those kids that just want to get everything perfect, like, it could, but there's a lot of time to do it, it's around something you love. And, and presenting is no longer the moment it used to be. Like, it's still going to be a moment, because they're going to be in front of some, might be in front of adults they don't know. But creating a presentation, like, I mean, I went into science room the other day, and at every table, there was a Chromebook out. The kids were giving presentations to teach the content for that day to other kids. So like, that just meant that they had done that for homework, created a presentation to teach it. So, I don't know, I think that's going to get easier and easier for kids.
To go back to what was said earlier, the traditional classroom is gone. So the kids are now interacting more, so that level of anxiety of presenting something is gone, because they're doing it every day now. It's not where the teacher's at the beginning of the, at the front of the classroom lecturing, and the kid's sitting there taking notes, and then they've got to stand up and say something. Well, you know, that's when the fear of God happens, right? So it's all changed, it's all part of the, the way classroom learning has evolved in the last five to 10 years.
Yeah. And I'm just excited we found the place where to put it. Like, that was always, this has been in my head for, like, three years, but there was where you put it and not stress everything out. So we kind of found that, which is what's exciting.
That makes sense.
Do we need to do any formal vote on it?
No, not this one.
So, any other questions for Dr. Allen? Any comments?
Looking forward to judging this one, too.
Yeah, lock up a couple of days in June of 2019. I'll be struggling.
Yeah.
I want to have a more of appreciation for Mr. Macarini after that.
Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Enjoy your time outside of the classroom for this room.
If you want to give me the number, I could go call the snow day.
If you could just write my message for tomorrow morning, just go into Blackboard Connect.
Fending off teacher texts, saying, he's in school committee, he's not calling it tonight.
I felt the text in my pocket.
Put out the meeting. Whoever moved this meeting along, you know?
I know, good. All right. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Tim.
All right, so moving down, we have old business, 6.1, superintendent's mid-cycle review. All right, so at our last meeting, I'll take over on this point, you had presented us with your evaluation, and we've had the chance to go through it. And I just want to read a little bit off. So thank you, everyone, for submission. So we, as a committee, feel that Mr. Smith has set solid goals for himself, the leadership team, and the schools. At this point of the mid-cycle review, all seems to be progressing well. The district continues to work towards the goal set, and we look forward to the end of your review. And just briefly, I just want to mention that we evaluate four standards. We look at instructional leadership, management, and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And Mr. Smith clearly outlines the work he does and provides much evidence for this. Do I need to go through any of the details on that, or do you think we're good?
No, we're good, we just have to vote.
Yeah, he said, yeah.
Okay, so we want to say thank you.
I want to thank all of you, you're all a part of it. It doesn't happen without this whole group working together.
I'll make a motion.
Just left.
I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's mid-cycle review as presented.
Motion made.
Second.
Any further discussion or comments on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those post nay, and that carries forward 4-0. We'll just need one to sign.
Sure, I'm signing.
Perfect, thank you.
Between now and the...
I know, not much time.
End of the year presentation, we'll try to make all those goals actually completed.
Exactly. All right, so moving on, we have 6.2, the update to fiscal year 2019 budget development.
Okay, in your packets, you have two documents. You have your goal sheet, that was something that we had developed going back to October, and we put action steps attached to each of the goal areas. The goals were sort of overarching goals in areas such as fiscal management and budget, which certainly is appropriate for this evening's discussion. And so I think the idea actually came from our last discussion, people wanted to look back at, how are we doing on these goals and the action steps with regard to developing this budget? The spreadsheet gives you an idea of sort of where we are with our budget requests, where we are with contractual obligations, just to, if you look at the bottom, you see that our current budget, fiscal year 18, which is the fiscal year we're in, is $29,195,201. So what we've tried to do is break out, if the town were to provide us increases of 1%, 1.5, 2, 2.5, and we've gone as high as 2.75, what that would look like, and how far down the budget request that were identified by the leadership team, we might be able to go. But wanted to bring them back to you to look both as, sort of, how they're prioritized right now and how we think we can achieve them, which first and foremost, with any budget, we want to achieve maintaining our existing staff and our successful programming, and move that into the next fiscal year. So that's the number one item up there, and you see where the contractual obligations in this budget that we're developing, what that cost is right now estimated at. And then we get into, right now, what we think is the prioritized order of the budget requests, some of which, such as the support for social-emotional challenges, that's not a request in terms of us asking for additional funds for the town. That's a goal that we had set last year, and we want to continue into this year, but part of that, accomplishing that goal, is identifying current funding and reallocating that to make it more effective, in turn, in this case, specifically towards supporting students with social-emotional challenges and curriculum. Such as this year at the high school, with some of the planning that we did last summer, we actually developed a social skills class that's being taught by one of our special educators, who actually is also licensed as an adjustment counselor. So as we do these type of creative approaches, part of our work is to identify where we have strengths to make some of these things happen. And so that's something that can happen at the high school, because of the staffing that we currently have.
I've been really studying this. Can I just go back to what we said?
Our goal.
Sure, absolutely.
And I looked at, we had 12 items, and we were dressed, all of them in one form of a fashion, except for three. And let me point out to you what the three are. Under fiscal management, number three, we have not addressed the increased stipend.
We actually, in our budget development, have.
Okay.
But we need you to eventually approve it.
And in educational program and curriculum, we've not, we've not discussed one or three. I would say, I would leave three out, because I brought that up. But as we move into the social, emotional range, I think that takes care of number three.
I agree with you on that.
So I think number one is something which, which is not really a financial decision. It's something maybe at some point, we can discuss with the high school administration and guidance department.
So they are actually, they're working on that now?
Okay.
So I can give you an update on some of these, I mean, your, your thinking, Mr. Pachero, is right on point.
Right.
That's, so number one, that you were talking about in our educational program and curriculum, is looking at the possibility of ending class rank at the high school. So the guidance department and the administrators are researching that.
Okay.
And they hope to have a recommendation for us and a timeframe in that recommendation. It's not something probably we're going to do immediately.
They'll be coming to us, though.
They're going to be coming, hopefully, within the month of April.
Oh, great.
Just one thing, that Mr. Fonseca and I, on number one fiscal management, we are studying the athletic budget, we had a meeting...
Two, three weeks.
So we are, we are looking at that, it may not affect this, may not affect this budget, we'll look a few years from now, but we are studying the budget and how that, and on athletic user fees and transportation.
My kids are coming here soon, you know, right?
So to that end, just to say, as part of that, we're working, we know costs have gone up.
Right.
But we have not increased the user fee, and we don't intend to increase the user fee from $149, although obviously districts around us have. So we're working creatively to say, okay, how do we then develop a budget? We may have to stop funding something or reallocate portions of that budget to athletics to make sure that that maintains an operational budget that can sustain that and keep the user fee at 149.
You know, and I was looking at the spreadsheet, thank you, Mr. Smith, for putting it the very number one goal. We always have this goal as a school committee, maintain our existing staff and programs. But I'm going to, if you do a change, if I'm going to ask the, the school committee to look at number eight, the math coach interventionist. I personally feel that there is a math coach now at the three through five level of both schools. And student enrollment equals to one math coach at K through two. I think we should change that to the instructional technology specialist, either at Bertrand or K through five. So make them, bring that up for discussion.
Wasn't that the interventionist part, though? Isn't that the key of that? That's currently as a coach that goes from school to school, and then this would allow a coach and interventionist, could be the same person.
The idea, I think, that Mr. Fredette was trying to present was that the fact that we share a coach between the two buildings, then your math specialist is not able to provide the same attention to interventions. We have discussed it as a leadership group, and we think we can offer different ways of getting at that, those interventions, without necessarily hiring another academic coach. But people would have to be open to being flexible and creative in how you do that. And we do some of that intervention work right now, predominantly at Meadowbrook, where we may have someone come in who is a retired licensed teacher and be hourly, and run interventions for us, when we run into situations where we can't staff the interventions immediately. And so those might be ways we can get at it at the other two elementary schools.
That sounds like passionate, though, a little bit.
Yeah, I know.
It's, yeah, it's, it's looking at it, you have more quicker-hitting, flexible ways of getting at it that are not going to be sustained year to year.
Yes. What did you want to put with the technology specialist?
I feel like if you're going to do that for Maple Shade in Mountain View, then you've got to add another math coach for K through two at Meadowbrook? I mean, they did talk, how many?
That's a likely scenario.
I don't think that it's an advisable scenario. I think that Mr. Pachero's making the point that you're servicing the same number of staff as your larger buildings.
Do they do intervention and coach at Meadowbrook?
It's one, one coach in Meadowbrook.
They don't do intervention?
They don't, they, well, currently, our math specialist at Meadowbrook is seeing students for intervention, she's getting trained in, like, a math recovery program that she can then train other staff to implement. It's a fine line between how long. I know that we have that model at the middle school, where your math and your reading specialists or coaches are providing a direct course to, they're doing the interventions. However, the scheduling is completely different, so it looks different. They're able to still meet with every teacher, both in their ELA departments as, as well as other departments, and provide specific support that way. Whereas in our elementary schools, it's a different schedule, so it's a little bit of a different model, where you would lose out on potentially some model lesson, lesson planning, that's done collaboratively with, right, you would miss out on that piece.
If you did intervention. Who's doing the intervention now at the...
At Meadowbrook.
Not in...
Maple Shade in Mountain View.
Maple Shade in Mountain View, they run it a little different in both places, they might have an interventionist providing it, maybe at will, and then somewhere else it might be...
Did she have, Mr. Pachero, someone out of your house who was moving kids out? Did she have some type of intervention?
What I'm saying, they do it differently.
Contracted out, as you're saying?
It's contracted out in one, and the other is some...
What kind of cost is that on a basis? You also have different grants.
Right.
Some schools are Title I, some schools are not Title I.
So, yeah, that's...
But one school is Title, yeah.
Maple Shade can get it.
Where Meadow is Title I, and so sometimes they can bring in through Title I funding interventions.
So how does the Meadowbrook coach interventionist do both at Meadowbrook and do their coaching job?
She does not do the majority of their intervention, it's done through an intervention teacher. They have a math intervention teacher.
Oh, they have a math intervention teacher. So why would they need another one then?
They're not, this is not...
I know, but to your, Rich is right, it's what you're going to ask.
I think he was trying to say, I think he was trying to paint the picture that if you're going to go by enrollment and staff, staffing and student numbers, what's to stop another school for requesting additional staff members?
You have a Meadowbrook, you said there's a coach and an interventionist.
And there's also staff that provide intervention at the three to five buildings, but I think they're looking to increase that.
So, but there's only one staff who's a coach from Meadowbrook and Mountain View, no, no specific interventionist at either school?
You mean a single person?
There is, there is, they are providing, they do have staff that's providing intervention.
There are people that run, that do direct the interventions, and they may start with the coach explaining how to set that up, but then they may take over the majority.
We're talking positions. How many coaches are at Meadowbrook? Two? One math?
One ELA, one math.
How many are at Meadowbrook and Mountain, and Meadowbrook, Maple Shade and Mountain View?
One ELA and one math.
Shared between the two buildings.
Split between the two, correct.
In Bertrand Park, one in...
One ELA, one math.
Correct, and the high school has none.
So if I may say, if you add one, if you continue this position added, it's changing the form that we have right now, am I correct? Because now we have two coaches.
It would change the number of students and staff that they would support.
Right, so they're getting more intervention than the other two buildings.
You said Meadowbrook has an interventionist.
He's talking coaches.
Right, but call it a coach or interventionist.
Every one of our schools has staffing. Every one of our schools has, the elementary schools has staffing that is providing intervention in ELA and in math. Our students are receiving intervention.
They're not necessarily Title interventionists, too. Yes.
So Meadowbrook, though, has a coach and an interventionist.
They have one intervention, they have one staff member, I don't think it's a full FTE, that does provide intervention.
And actually, the...
Beyond the two coaches, you're saying, beyond the two coaches.
Yeah, but that position was there before the coaching model, and the license is a special education license.
I don't know who's talking.
It's an interventionist for math, which is kind of what they're trying to do here.
Not necessarily specifically for math.
Not just math.
And can't, and can't, and honestly, with the number of students that that school has, it's, it's difficult for one.
Right, so you need other people, but to Mr. Pachero's point, he's saying the, the numbers are off, but doesn't this equal the numbers? So if there's two in Meadowbrook, there's a coach and an interventionist, FTE.
So I think we're talking, I was in the area just here.
Math coach or interventionist?
Right, I think it's, right.
He's calling it.
He wants one at full school.
I think we have to clarify.
But technically, you could float the coach and float the interventionist and do the same.
I think you have to clarify what the request is, but if you're looking at academic coaches, our academic coaches have the same workload across the district right now. Number of staff they support, number of students that they help to instruct.
That's the point I was trying to make. Right, I get that point, but, but if we're looking at Meadowbrook as comparison, and they're trying to get interventionist more so, which is what I understand it to be than coaching, and it's the same model.
You're going to ask that person to coach as well as...
Because they're in the building, right? But say now, Mountain View and Maple Shade were the same building, right? Then probably one would be an interventionist, one would be a coach, which is exactly what we have at Meadowbrook.
Correct, you don't have a, I believe it's a point something FTE in terms of the interventionist. And that interventionist may do both ELA and math.
There's a reason they asked for it, and there's a reason to ask for it, and what we're worried about is overlapping the same.
Because if you, if you look traditionally, and, and you'd have to clarify what the buildings are actually requesting, and what I'm, what I'm speaking to is just, you know, instructional support title. There is a need for math instructional support in an intervention format. If you look, all of our schools have reading or multiple reading interventionists. So Meadowbrook has multiple reading interventionists because of the size of the building, the size of the student population. Maple Shade and Mountain View each have reading specialists, one, not two, whereas Meadowbrook has two because of the size of the building. Math interventionists, they do provide math intervention, but may not have a complete...
Just one thing, so I think we're getting confused by titles.
Yeah.
So when we're talking about literacy intervention, generally, a reading specialist might do that. So the, the term interventionist is something that, in, with this request, they're putting on, they're combining it with the coach, because they would like a math-oriented person to be in each school to help run or oversee interventions. I think that, that's what they're looking for. Does that make sense?
Right, that's why I'm saying you need to clarify. Well, that's why, so you need to clarify with the people who made the request.
I think in some cases, to do the intervention themselves, maybe their neediest, neediest students.
Right.
But that one person may not be able to run all the interventions, they may be able to set it up and...
Well, so to that point, though, then there's a need for an interventionist at the...
Three through five.
Three through five? If they came, if you were at a whole FTE and that doesn't cover it all...
I was even just kated five, we could use additional math intervention, yes. Staff to be able to provide math intervention.
Right.
But I, I'm not sure that that's what your request is, it's for a 50-50 split. A coach who then provides intervention.
It's only because they want the same person in the same building. I think what they're trying to achieve, from what I understand, and I could be wrong, is to obtain more intervention.
Well, that's my understanding, sure.
Because they both, they both scheduled differently.
I think that's what Mr. Pachero's having conversation with, and I am neutral giving you just...
Right.
Yes, you did a very good job.
Great job, great job.
Well, I was throwing it out there, if, if the school wants to stay with what we have in front of us, I, I just think that from what we've heard today, and I didn't have the presentation, I was gonna make the recommendation anyway, but it's special to my special.
I think there's a need for that, no doubt.
Right.
But I don't know if it's.
It's at the sacrifice of this.
Right, that's, that's what I was gonna say.
I think it's a pretty slippery road. If they put math coach, they'd be easy decisions, and now they put the slash in there.
It's not for them to say no though.
I think, I think it's a slippery.
Oh, it's slippery. Wow.
I don't, I think if it was just a math coach, I could convince you.
I'm the cynical one in the group, Rich. What do you know, seriously?
If it was just a math coach, then they'd convince you out to switch to.
Right, but I don't, but from what I understand of what they're trying to accomplish, it's not just the math coach, it's they're trying to get more intervention.
Right.
And so in order to accomplish that, they have a warm body who's gonna do both in one school and do both in the other school instead of flip-flop two.
Yes, they have one in each school. That person's gonna have a one to, one to 300 student ratio, whereas at Metal Brook, their math is one to 500.
Not if you add the interventionist.
Or some to 600.
They're not interventionist.
I'm not buying it, not buying interventionist. I guarantee you, the person's gonna be a math coach, I'm guaranteeing.
Hundred percent math coach?
Hundred percent math coach, I guarantee it.
So if I could provide another, just, just one positive for the current model is the continuity of curriculum between the two buildings. Having one person who goes between the two buildings, while not ideal, we do have staff that do that in other roles as well.
Right.
For our literacy and our math coaching model, three to five, it allows us to have a district perspective as well and for them to have the, kind of the district goal and how they can support that within the school goals and frameworks. And you have more of an opportunity to ensure continuity of curriculum in those two areas across the two schools. That does not mitigate that they may have a need, but I'm just giving you another, one positive for the current structure would be that.
So why don't we float, continue to float the coach? And if what they're truly looking for is an interventionalist, then why don't we float the interventionalist between schools as well?
I think floating an intervention is, is a little more difficult to do.
Okay.
Which may be why, if that's the real push behind the request.
Scheduling each building is not necessary.
No, and that's why I get why they're trying to be the same person.
And knowing that we have, we have English language learner staff that goes between buildings, those buildings have to schedule very specifically in order for that service to happen. Intervention, you need to be a little more fluid with because you wanna bring in multiple grade levels at different times and not have to schedule over there regularly. You wanna make sure it's plus more.
No, I get that.
So I think that might be more difficult.
So could we, could we coordinate between coaches, between the two buildings effectively? So that they're accomplishing what you're hoping they accomplish?
Are current coaches or?
Coaches.
I can't find the term.
It's ironic.
I'm a little bit of a technologist.
We do now try to coordinate. There's a coaching meeting.
I'm sure you do. No, it's more a rhetorical question, just to, to address the fact that you like the fact that it's a coach at full schools. I get that, it makes sense. But if what they're trying to do is accomplish something a little different, can we still do that with two coaches?
Potentially.
Potentially. That'd be up to you to.
In terms of coordinating, okay, I see what you're saying.
Listen, in the end, you tell us what you wanna do with number eight, and we're gonna probably do that. So let's have another discussion another day.
I do have to bring this question forward on Friday, the budget.
Well, we have, we have to bring, yeah, we have to bring our staffing requests forward to town managers.
What have we given them yet?
We haven't given them anything.
We didn't give them a number?
They haven't sent any guidelines. They haven't sent any guidelines.
Other than we talked to them and said, oh, hi.
No, I got an email from Sarah that says, Gordon and I did, that the budget template is due Friday at noon time.
But there's no guy?
Two percent on the first page and any supplemental goes on the supplement. I'm sorry, and they go over that.
The two percent, they, they figured two percent to cover all your contractual obligations and then the supplemental.
Yeah, but really.
You're not gonna get to number eight.
When you forget any of them.
Well.
So these aren't supplemental.
Yeah, these are supplemental.
Right.
Right.
The discussions we've had to date though are that we should be able to get into our supplemental request.
Right. Oh, we better.
Right.
Well, three percent is a $1 million levy capacity, but we're not taking no for an answer because that's just, that's just being start. I don't even know why you wouldn't do that. Why would you not do that?
Because they've got a template.
I've been surprised before, so.
Yeah. Well, they've got a template and just, you know, fill it out because the two percent is barely our contractual.
The way you're presenting it now, in the current order, you're gonna be close anyway on that supplemental.
Oh, for the.
Where the math coach slash interventionist, you're, you're going to need, yeah, you're gonna need more than the 275 to actually make that fully happen.
But if we, I understand, I understand.
How did we get to that point though? I thought we were at 275 already. Why did we get over it?
I don't think.
What, what do you mean?
Why are we at 833 but 275 is 802? I thought we supposed to.
Because there was a couple of retirements after the date that.
No, you're saying why is the 275 not covering?
275 isn't covering the supplemental, the.
For the 833.
Yeah.
So what I started to say was that the, we had a couple of retirements that came in after these numbers were, so if we, and that, that affects the bottom line, so it's actually brings it down to about the 803.
Oh, 833 is not correct. Because retirement.
There's that difference, constantly changing behind the scenes, little things here and there.
It's actually the 542 is not correct, probably on this. That's the one that's changed, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
That's correct.
Those are retirements.
The retirement.
We're gonna go from top to mid-scale.
But as always, we have a placeholder, a placeholder here that we stay with and continue.
Then I would just put this in there and see what happens.
Did we have the, no, the technology specialist on as a request this year from?
Yeah.
It's number four and it's from the high school.
From the high school, correct.
Number four.
No, but you're talking on another one.
But he wanted to get two of them in one year.
Well, he was looking at another one in place of the number eight.
That's why I said it was so ironic that he's the one who's bringing this question again.
But they have a plan set forth of one, two, and then, and, you know, one in the first year, two the second year.
Well, I mean, we could submit this, we could change our minds.
We could change our minds.
We may need to hear from Elaine and Michael, but the fact that they're asking.
Well, we talked more about social emotional as well.
The other thing is right.
I agree with that too. You can submit your supplemental budget, which will take you.
They're all around the same.
Probably to that 275 level.
Right.
And then until you have your public budget hearing, which we could do in April, let's say.
Right.
You don't have to finalize.
Right.
What you're basically presenting.
Right, just the bottom line.
So it could be additional.
There's options, yeah.
Okay.
I think we're on the good side. And I think we have to stick on the 275, otherwise I would say add it on top, but I think we already, we already committed to that.
Yeah.
Well, 275 actually would get you.
It would get us, it would get us real close.
But you need another half percent to leave another FTE.
Well, there's nothing saying we can't put that in there also.
Well, they haven't given us any.
Other than we already gave them the 275.
Oh, that makes me feel bad if I did put that in.
No, you did, excellent.
You did.
No, it fit right into the narrative because when they came in with the three and the $1 million on the levy, how can they say no to 275? It's unfathomable to me. I can be surprised. So I think your point with the 275 was right on time.
Yeah.
It's just we can't go back now because we've already said it. I mean, we could, there's nothing to say we couldn't.
Well, but I, well, we gotta see what they, you know, what the conversation is before we go back with more.
Well, I have to hand this in Friday.
Right, but I mean, just.
I mean, I think this, what I think this budget is, is responsible from the school department. It's looking towards the future, moving us forward, but we're not asking for everything. Clearly, there are other needs that we really would like to address. It's public education, we can't do everything.
You know how I feel about this request you have. I say every year, it should not be a supplemental, you should put the whole 2.75 in the.
I know, I know.
This is not supplemental, we need these things, but I know we gotta do.
It's a template.
Yeah, she did change her wording and the format a little bit this year where she did say the first page is contractual obligations.
Well, that's what they wanted to look at first.
Not to exceed 2%, which I'm just gonna remind you is better than last year when they first came back and said 1%.
Yeah, contractual.
Yeah, not to exceed 1%.
Not to, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we didn't what contractual was anyway.
Yeah.
They were learning.
But you know what? I think everybody, there wasn't anybody that could stay under 1%.
No.
Maybe the library.
It was a very difficult.
Especially with this size of a budget.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that they're realizing that, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, that's why they want it to be contractual separate.
Yeah.
That's probably pretty standard. Contractual obligations are probably right around one and a half, 2% every year.
And that's, that's part of like a quote unquote fixed part of the budget. You really can't control it.
Right.
The supplemental or the second page is, are the variables every year.
Is that what it's called supplemental?
Supplemental.
Because then they decide, well, this is good, this is good.
But they can't.
You'll hold 2.75. That's what I feel.
I know.
And so there is one other thing that I do need directed from you for, you know, presenting the budget, handing it in on Friday, is about the school committee stipend and what you would like to do.
I can't remember what.
I know, I have it.
I have all the information for you.
Go ahead.
So in FY '17, you made $4,200 collectively. It's $800 for each member, $1,000 for the chair. And at the current year, FY '18, it's, they raised it to 1,250 per member, $1,750 for the chair, for a total of $6,750.
Okay, that doesn't cover one of the salaries. I don't think I can pay you $7,000.
Yeah, I was trying to, I'm sorry, I wanted to look that up before I.
They're getting, okay, here's what, they're, they're getting, members are getting 35, the vice president gets 45, the president gets 55.
Okay.
Hundred and nine?
So you had last year requested 3,500 each for the members and 4,000 for the chair for a total of 18,000. So that would be an additional 11,250 that I would need to put through on the supplemental.
In the operating budget.
Yeah, it's actually under the town.
There's a different line.
Oh, it is on.
Yeah, it is, it's a separate page.
We put in the request, but it's on the town.
Yeah, put it down.
Right. I think you guys.
Yeah. Well, and it's clear, and I know this goes without saying, but none of us are in it for the money, and really, it's not a lot of money either way you look at it. However, there's some cost to it, and it's really about the council and their salary. And to diminish the role of this committee versus that committee is moderately insulting.
And you are the only other.
I was gonna say, the only other elected board, and I made that point.
It's a fundamental lack of understanding from their part. If they were making what we're making, I wouldn't ask for anything.
What they did, what we did last year is we got lumped in with other, all the other boards that are getting stipends.
I will say too that they did change that format, and there's a separate line for elected boards versus appointed.
But it's still, the compensation was lumped in.
I agree.
With the other boards that got stipends.
It was a lack of understanding.
It was a lack of understanding.
So perhaps they'll have a different.
They won't.
No, they won't, but we'll keep trying.
You're trying to break.
Thank you, well, thank you.
So you take a formal vote on that list?
Yes, we do.
You should vote on the whole thing.
I would just caution not to vote on the bottom line. If you wanna vote on submitting the order of requests for the budget development.
Don't you wanna vote on the bottom line?
Not until you have your public hearing.
Why?
Because it may change. We still have discussions.
But isn't our request through the council on the, only the bottom line?
So is there vote to just submit that?
Is to submit, yeah, our current budget.
To Rich's point that they can't be telling us what to do.
No, this is, this is not going to the council, but it's going to the town finance director, the town manager, and then we continue to have discussions around.
But it goes to council for approval.
Eventually, not yet.
The town manager presents the budget to the council.
Right, but once she gets our, our budgets from each department, then she sets up meetings where we would go in and discuss what each of those items are and what it ends up.
Which I think is gonna happen very quickly because I think per the charter, they're, they.
They're behind.
Yeah, so it's something about, I don't know, if it's mid, mid-April or beginning of April, the first week, that they're supposed to, the town manager bring forward a draft to the town council. So I think those meetings are gonna happen very quickly in the next few weeks.
So you need a motion to approve.
No, just a motion to submit.
To.
The FY '19 budget priority list as presented.
As presented.
Including the school committee stipends.
Because you're saying that there may be changes in the, in these figures, correct? Before Friday? That's why, so I wouldn't vote on the bottom line.
No, but I think, I think Gordon, our bottom line is all that matters.
No, I don't think it's gonna change the bottom line here, I just, the detail of the decision.
The 542 is gonna change.
Can I withdraw that?
But the 542 will change.
Retirement.
Right.
But that's not, that's what'll change. So I wouldn't vote on this sheet.
The number.
You can vote on the priority list.
Priority list.
Which, yeah.
So that's the motion.
Do you want to repeat that motion?
Yes, Gordon, you're right.
So I approved my recommendation.
Yeah, I moved to approve the FY '19 budget priority list as presented and including the school committee stipends as discussed. But I wouldn't necessarily include the number one of that because that, that just, well, that's gonna go on your page one.
It goes on page one.
It'll be on there as well.
Yeah, it will be on.
But it won't necessarily be that 542.
I'll second.
All right, so I have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Okay, good luck.
Our contractual obligations are not 542. You said they changed because of retirements.
Yes.
A little bit.
A little bit. Whether we, whether we pay that this year versus next year, there's, so.
That's managed.
It's a moving target.
I pay the retirement benefit for the.
Right.
All right.
So you have to vote on that, so all those.
Do you just tell them to move on?
I am. All those who favor please say aye.[1378.12] All those in favor, please say aye, all those opposed nay, carries forward, lower zero. That's my job.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Keep going.
Yeah, thank you. All right, moving on to new business, we have 7.1 revised policy, JICH, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use.
Okay. This is just the start of many policies.
Yeah, this is only the start.
In your packets, you have a revised policy, I've given you the original one that was in our policy manual, the shorter version, and then I bolded where the additional items that MASC is recommending we place into our policy, JICH, which is alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited.
We piloted paragraphs three, four, and five, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Basically, to your point, two things have happened in this update. We're adding in vapor and e-cigarettes and we're also adding in now the legal requirement to do this reading status.
Point of clarification is first reading or are we handling this?
It can be first reading.
Now, to me, this is like common.
No, but I'm all for sticking to the program.
So then have a second.
Yeah, I just want to.
Unless we don't have bathrooms.
I don't care, I mean, I've.
No, but it's procedural, yeah, but it's procedural.
Okay. How common are e-cigarettes in the schools?
How common?
Yes, vaping. Does it happen?
Vaping, vaping's increasing not only in our high school, but high school across.
She's excited to have the answer.
Yeah.
She seems to have the answer to the question.
Yeah, well, it's just hard to find.
It's hard to like control it, I guess, because they just get them and I don't know how they get them, but they just all have them, I don't know.
And I know essentially when I say this, but kids do go into the bathroom and use them because teachers are not allowed to go into student bathrooms.
Not anymore.
Well, they're allowed to go into student bathrooms, not allowed to go into a stall after.
Yeah.
And these things are smokeless, they're odorless, and so things, I think it's really, unless someone has seen them, that's another student that wants to tattle on them. I think it's very hard for staff to really see this.
Yeah, they're very, yeah.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make a point.
We vote.
No, no.
No, do first reading.
Second, go, go.
Yeah, so we're going to move on to.
To bring this back to second reading?
Oh, we're going to.
No, it's a second reading, you were right. It was procedural.
Stick with policy.
Just so you know, next agenda is going to have quite a few policies on it.
It will.
All right, 7.2 policy EDE on recycling.
Okay, so this is actually a new policy, it's not in the MASC policy manual, however, it is a policy in a number of districts across the Commonwealth. So looking at samples from the various districts, we have written somewhat of a simple recycling and waste reduction policy that we wanted to vet with the entire school committee.
Okay, it's very moving and we'll have it on the second reading.
Because we don't recycle at all right now. No, we do, we do.
That's what we do.
Okay.
My concern is I can't follow through on this.
Actually, all schools, the impetus behind this was that we now have a town recycling coordinator. And she is working with us and probably more importantly, she's working with our vendor to make sure that things that are in the contract, such as different or differentiated barrels, happen.
Right.
So we're doing a better job at the high school, which I think Ally can attest to, that we actually have.
Paper.
Newer barrels, we're recycling paper, we're also recycling plastic, yeah.
There's the environmental club, they come around, you know, that bit.
Every classroom, plastic and paper.
And we actually have barrels now that actually are labeled correctly, and so we know where to put it, which helps our custodians make sure that they get it to the right.
And they'll just toss them.
That was our conversation.
It is happening in the other schools as well.
Good.
But also timely pickups too was important so that.
Yeah, that seems to be across the board.
Okay, moving down, we have 7.3, the MSBA vote language for approval to submit a statement of interest to the four programs.
Go ahead, Rich.
I do have to make a comment before I read this.
Yes.
At that basketball game, we had a chance to talk to a couple of high school administrators. And it was, you know, right after we had that town council meeting.
Okay.
And it just struck me how, you know, we're focusing on this roof and it says it only affects one classroom, that's all. Doesn't affect anything else, and Rich, you got to hear about the junior hallway now because the water's coming up so bad that it's half, half tiled. So somehow town council has to understand, you patched the roof and you want to do the electrical, well, this is going to happen, this is.
We still have all these other things.
This is an old building.
We did have, I had a follow-up conversation with the town manager regarding that, because it's great that the town is fiscally healthy.
Right.
And so that they feel now for the first time in a while that they can put, say, 3.8 million to tackle the electrical.
But what's next?
Correct.
Yeah.
To replace this entire roof, they would have a $6.8 million project. And then what would the HVAC cost? And are you going to be able to do all those projects within the next three years?
Right.
Where this still does fiscally make a lot of sense to continue to put in and possibly get 55% reimbursement to handle all the system.
Exactly.
So, yes, you may.
I move, having convened an open meeting on Monday, March 12, 2018, prior to the closing date, the Easton Middle School Committee of the Town of Eastland Meadow, according with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated on or before April 6, 2018, Easton Middle High School, located at 180 Maple Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in future. Priority three, loss of accreditation, priority five, replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs of the school facility. Priority seven, replacement or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application,